Would anyone like to make any comments at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm Ron Miller. I just moved to Lawrence last year along with my wife. Became acquainted with some new friends at Independence Incorporated. We have with us tonight Renita Wilks, Norm White, Dot Neri, Marilyn Brune, Ray Pence, Stacy Hunter-Swartz, the executive director of Independence Incorporated, and Bob McKesick. We're very happy to be here to join in the celebration of the American Disabilities Act, and we appreciate the support from the City Commission of Lawrence, Kansas.
Thank you. I'll read the proclamation at this time. Whereas generations of Americans with disabilities have improved our country in countless ways, refusing to accept the world as it was, they have torn down the barriers that prohibited them from fully realizing the American dream. Their tireless efforts led to the July 26, 1990 enactment of the Americans with Disabilities Act, also known as ADA, one of the most comprehensive pieces of civil rights legislation in our nation's history. And whereas equal access, equal opportunity, and the freedom to make our lives what we are principles upon which our nation was founded, and they continue to guide our efforts to perfect our union. Together, we can ensure our country includes the talents and contributions of the approximately 54 million Americans living with disabilities, and we will move forward with work of providing pathways to opportunity to all our people. And whereas on this day we celebrate the 22nd anniversary of the ADA, the progress we've made, and we reaffirm our commitment to equal opportunity for all Americans. Now therefore, I, Robert J. Shaw, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim July 26, 2012, to be the City of Lawrence, Kansas, celebration of the 22nd anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Congratulations.[131.22][131.22](APPLAUSE). We have another little deal tonight. They're all really big deals. We have a person who we're going to recognize who's not here, and I'll tell you why she's not here, but she's going to get her recognition from me, Vice Mayor Dever. This is recognition for a woman in Eneades, Greece, who helped to put together our sister city there, and it was our third sister city. So I'd like to read this proclamation in her behalf. Whereas the City of Lawrence and Eneades, Greece, became sister cities in November of 2009, and whereas friendships have been strengthened throughout the three-year sister-city relationship, which continues to strengthen the bonds between our two different communities and our respective residents, and whereas the relationship grew from a shared cultural interest between our two communities through the University of Kansas Summer Theater Program and continues to be a foundation for exchange and learning, and whereas Dimitra Pizzikou was and continues to be an integral supporter for the creation of a formal sister-city relationship between Eneades and Lawrence. And whereas during the November 2009 visit to Lawrence by the Greek delegation, Dimitra provided a crucial role in connecting our two cultures through translation and coordination of the delegation, and whereas her continued support and dedication to the sister-city program is an invaluable asset, and today I am honored to designate Dimitra Pizzikou as an honorary citizen of Lawrence, Kansas. Now therefore, I, Robert J. Shaw, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby call on all citizens of Lawrence to recognize Dimitra Pizzikou for her work to establish and maintain a sister-city program with the City of Lawrence, Kansas. And with that, we are going to present her a key to the city, which will look like this, and we will be doing that next Saturday evening in an ancient Greek theater in the area of Eneades, Greece. So that's what we're going to be doing. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. Before I get started, I would greatly appreciate if everyone would reach in, grab their cellphone, and turn it to silence if you have any sound on. It kind of disrupts us a little bit. A couple remembrances also. If there's any public speaking, you're limited to five minutes. At the four-minute and 30-second mark, I will bring this nice, soft, gently reminder that it's time to wrap up, and we would appreciate if you would, you know, finish your remarks and be respectful of the time limit. With that, those two ground rules in play. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, and the consent agenda items are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If a discussion is desired, then any item may be removed by either the City Commission or the public at large. We will take those on an individual basis then. Is there any item on the consent agenda a member of the commission would like to remove for a separate discussion? Any item that a member of the public would like to remove for a separate discussion? Come forward and tell us which item, and then we'll discuss it.
Shall I introduce myself first?
Just state your name and ask which one, then we'll remove it, and then we'll discuss it after we get through the rest of the consent.
My name is Candace Davis. I live in the Orient neighborhood, and I would like the item regarding the appointment of a Historic Preservation Board position removed for just some discussion.
Okay, very good. Any other items the public would like to have for a separate discussion, separate vote? Hearing no others, the balance of the consent agenda. I will add to that claims from vendors in the amount of $2,085,052.92. Is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda with the claims?
So moved.
Moved Amix.
Second.
Second, Dever. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Carries 4-0. All right, now we will have a discussion of the appointment. Why don't you come back up to the -- I'll give a little background since it's up to the mayor to make appointments. I made a number of appointments this week in which I think I take pride in who I appoint to these boards, and I want to remind the citizens that it's my obligation to try and keep these boards balanced so they reflect a true sentiment of the community such that we have a fair discussion and a fair amount of information that plays out at the board level. So when it's an advice to this commission, we've kind of had that community flavor connected to it. So I try to do that. I keep that in mind when I'm making these appointments. Ms. Davis?
Yeah, and I do want to say I appreciate, I'm sure they're very thoughtful considerations, but it did come to my attention, and I do want to say, I live in the Orient neighborhood. I live in a house that was the first house saved by the Lawrence Preservation Alliance. It would have been demolished and replaced with one of these very ugly fourplexes. Luckily, it's there, and it enhances our community. I did ask that this appointment to the Historic Resources Commission be pulled from the consent agenda for some clarification. There seemed to me to be confusion with two conflicting requirements for HRC appointments on the city website. So is it necessary to have a lawyer for an appointment or merely a suggestion as to one of the backgrounds? And really, that is in part the extent of what I want to say about that. But I would like to speak with regard to historic preservation, and I would like to emphasize how important it is to have individuals who are truly interested and passionate about historic preservation. The HRC's mission is very narrow, and that is to protect the historic resources in the city and to follow state and federal historic guidelines. It is about saving and restoring structures that give us a sense of time and place. It's about our history. I was recently in Omaha, and today, one of the most popular areas in that city is an old warehouse district by the river, not a new shopping center. It's old, it's interesting, and it's very unique. San Francisco, Charleston, Savannah, New Orleans, all cities that share the richness of their past are favorite cities for people to visit. HRC decisions and recommendations to the City Commission are guided by preserving our Lawrence history. At times, this may seem to be in opposition of some city projects, but the focus is understandably very different. I don't think all people realize this, but not all cities have an HRC review board. The HRC is part of what is called a certified local government that partners with the State Historic Preservation Office and the National Park Service. This review board allows Lawrence to access state and federal funds as well as applying for historic designations. The Orient neighborhood would not have gotten funds to expand the historic district had Lawrence not had an HRC, nor would they have gotten a grant to study the design guidelines that are being worked on right now for the Orient neighborhood. When I worked on the expansion of the Orient neighborhood historic district about eight years ago, I had no idea how critical this review board was to our city. This body demonstrates to the state and the federal government that we are serious about preservation and have the ability to set a standard, review projects, and honor state and federal historic guidelines. So lastly, I'd like to say, I don't think it's unknown to us that many of the boards are influenced by political and special interests, and I'm guilty of that as well. I've tried to, you know, root for my special interests too, but this particular board, the HRC, really should be exempt from any kind of partisan politics. Thank you.
Questions? Staff want to take a response to that?
Mayor, I'll respond to that as my department staffs the HRC through the Historic Resources Administrator. To answer the direct question, there is no code requirement that this be an attorney position. We have encouraged, when the attorney position is up for appointment, that it be filled with -- sorry.
I can talk loud. That it be filled with a law professional because there's value on many of our boards that, because of their legal scope of view, have that professional on the board helping other members understand the legal aspects of it. There is a criteria in the code that outlines that the members should demonstrate knowledge or training in specific areas. In the instance of your appointment tonight, the two areas of demonstrating knowledge or training, in my opinion, lies in planning and law, which are two criteria in the code. And so we probably are the ones that have encouraged the lawyer position of the HRC to be sort of a continual position of law.
Thank you. Any questions to staff? Anyone else like to address this agenda item?
Gary Rexro, 2824 Gil Avenue here in town. I happen to know the candidate that has applied to or has sought placement on the HRC board, and just want to speak on his behalf. He's traveling today and would otherwise be here. I've known Mr. Rasmussen for a little bit over a year. I've worked with him personally on a number of different items, and I found him to be a well-studied, well-reasoned, thoughtful, and particularly open-minded individual, someone that's dedicated to a cause. Was thrilled to hear that he was interested in this particular appointment, and after hearing the importance of the position and what is needed on this board to keep it a great asset for the community and help keep the board focused on the right things, I can't support him more strongly. So I want to give you that feedback.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments? Okay, back to the commission.
Well, I'm going to make the opening statement, and I am as much protective and honor history as anyone in this room. In fact, I have the distinct record of voting twice to save the Old English Lutheran Church, and twice it was voted down 3-2, but through some fancy appeals work, it stands today. So I'm going to use that as my statement of my appreciation for history and for what it means to me in this community. I have been bewildered by the HRC's, some of their recent decisions, and let me state a few of them just for the record here. First of all, downtown, the whole downtown is in some environs of one building or another. There's very few buildings that don't get caught up in some environs that is registered in the area. So when we start talking about the downtown development, everything is in play at the HRC. Four projects for downtown were voted against by the HRC in an environs issue. One of them is the Borders Bookstore. Another one is Hobbs Taylor Loft. Another one is the Arts Center, and most recently is the Hotel at 9th and New Hampshire. Three of those projects are standing today, and I think they're good projects. Why is it that the HRC has to find fault on these environs issues when developers are working to the best of their ability to get these things into a particular kind of context and size that works for downtown, but yet they're disallowed? So, you know, I'm a little unhappy. Personally, I'm just going to lay it out here. I'm a little unhappy with what I see coming out of the HRC. I was on the commission that instituted the HRC, and I remember my statements at that time. I said, "I hope that it becomes an advocate for history. I hope it does not become an obstructionist. I hope that it does not stand in the way of progress. I hope they do their work right, that you get the product you want, and that progress is allowed to continue." So on these environs issues, I find that the HRC is extraordinarily strict, so strict that it becomes almost impossible to put your building into play. So from that aspect, I'm looking for people with a little broader range, a little broader idea of what should be allowed and what should go forward. So that's my statement, and that's in essence why I made the appointment. What else?
Well, Mayor, I appreciate your statement there. Somebody who's had the opportunity to make, you know, similar kind of appointments, you know, protect the responsibility of the mayor in going out and finding good quality people to serve in any of the positions. I know that it's tough sometimes finding individuals who are willing to serve, but we appreciate the people that are willing to step up and take some of the heat that we all go through. So, you know, I think never not supported an appointment by a mayor while I've been on this commission because I do know a lot of time goes into selecting an individual and asking somebody to come forward and to, you know, serve this community. So I appreciate your comments and plan on supporting your recommendation for appointment.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd echo that. Commend you for making that effort to round things out. I also served with Stan on the Planning Commission during my time on the commission. I found him to be, you know, extremely open-minded, I think specifically on the Orient issue. Stan was one that went, you know, to great lengths to walk the neighborhood and get to know the issues and to make a real effort to improve the quality of life in that area. And I think he does have an appreciation for Lawrence as a whole and the importance of our history. I would say, you know, along the lines of just talking about the HRC, it may be time to think about even when we look at these qualifications, I don't know how staff feels, but, you know, it's similar to the Planning Commission in that they've got a pretty narrow focus, and they rely pretty heavily on staff. No matter what your background is, this stuff gets fairly complicated, and there's a heavy reliance on staff, and you've still got to go through the facts that are presented to you, same as the Planning Commission, and make the best decision you can. So I'm not sure just how specific a background needs to be required in order to do that, nor am I sure seven people is enough on the Planning Commission. And I say that simply because I know that, for instance, in this particular case in 9th and New Hampshire, we had two meetings in a fairly short period that we didn't have a quorum. So we waited another X amount of time because we didn't have enough people there to hear the issue, and that's certainly something that I think may send a message we don't want to either as far as being obstructionist potentially. So, but that may be for another conversation. I certainly support the appointment at any rate this time.
I support your recommendation for the HRC for Stan Rasmussen. I think he's served on the BZA and the Planning Commission. I think he's intimately aware of what goes into serving the community and the time that it's required to do a good job. These unpaid positions require a lot of effort, and I think Stan is one of those people that will read all the materials, evaluate those materials carefully, and try to provide a reasonable conclusion based on the facts. Stan is very well-qualified for the position from an educational experience and from a training experience, and I think as a citizen of Lawrence for more than 20 years, you can't ask for a better applicant. So I enthusiastically support your recommendation.
Thank you. Entertained a motion at this time?
So moved.
Moved, Dever. Second, Amix. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Carries 4-0. Next item on the agenda will be our City Manager's Report.
Mayor, Commissioners, just a few items to walk you through this evening. We did put together a report on the usage of the parking garage on New Hampshire Street. That was part of our discussion when we were talking about the 9th and New Hampshire area. And I think what you do see is that it is seeing some steady increase in utilization. Also, in response to Vice Mayor Dever's question, when we had the hearing on the HRC appeal in regards to 9th and New Hampshire, he asked about some of the history in regards to actions in regards to the HRC reviews on New Hampshire, and we did provide some information in regards to that. I think you've already talked about that. Scott McColl has put together an updated, long-ranging work plan for the Planning Division in his department. Encourage you to take a look at that. A lot of good activity going on there. If you have any questions, I'm sure Scott will be happy to respond to them either now or later. You all have approved a contract for us to proceed with the infrastructure installation out on the former farmland property. That is getting underway. We're also using some city crew time as we have time to go out and do a number of things, including mowing and removing some of the debris and other general cleanup of the site, and really appreciate their hard work out there. Also, in our Public Works Department, we've got a lot of responsibilities for city buildings, and they've provided an updated report, kind of a mid-year status report, on a number of work items that they have in regards to city facilities. Congratulations to Jessica Roberts in the Planning Department as well. In this case, the Community Development Division Department of our Planning and Development Services Department that was recently recognized at a professional association meeting. And then we have hosted a rain barrel workshop. I'm not exactly sure why. We're not getting a lot of rain, but maybe that'll bring the rain on. But it has been an important part of our education efforts in Stormwater Utility, and it's a neat program as well. So I commend all of that to your reading as you have an opportunity. Be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, our regular agenda. The first item on our regular agenda is to conduct a public hearing to consider the vacation of the right-of-way located on the northwest corner of Lot 142 on Kentucky Street, formerly known as 1234 Kentucky Street, and requested by the property owner, St. John's Church.
Pretty straightforward. St. John's, currently, this is the property line log here. See, currently, the property line extends a little bit to the north beyond the property line. They would just like to clean this up. They have requested 15-foot vacation. We've notified all the adjacent property owners within 200 feet, all the utilities. Nobody has any objections. Your action tonight would be to hold the public hearing and pending any comments in your discussion, approve the order of vacation if appropriate.
How many decades has it been like that?
Long time. We -- it was plotted with the extra right-of-way to potentially at some point go through the park. Obviously, that's not going to happen. We don't see a need for it in the future. So it's a 90-foot right-of-way now. Typically, we can get by with 60 on most roads like this, so it'd be okay.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing item. We will now open the public hearing.
Moved.
Moved. Moved to open the public hearing. Dever, second, Amix. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Carries 4-0. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to close the meeting.
Moved.
Moved, Dever. Second, Amix. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Carries 4-0. Commissioners?
Motion.
I move to approve this.
Moved. Moved, Dever. Second, Carter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Carries 4-0. Next item on the agenda is to conduct a hearing to consider the vacation of the right-of-way located in the McConnell Edition, Lot 1, commonly known as 1111 East 23rd Street. McConnell Machinery Company Incorporated is requested by the property owner, Doris McConnell. Staff?
Again, another simple vacation. The property in question is highlighted in red. You can see on down the road, we have some buildings that have already been built. Again, this was dedicated to the city in 86. You can see there's some equipment that's being parked out here right now, and the city does not need this right-of-way. KDOT doesn't mind vacating it either. Again, we did contact all the utilities and the property owners within 200 feet. West Star thought they might have some poles that might be within that area, so this vacation, if the commission desires to approve it, would still reserve an easement for utilities. Neither the owner nor West Star necessarily went out and verified it, but the owner didn't have a problem leaving it with an easement encumbrance on it. So your action tonight would be, again, to open the public hearing and pending your discussion and review, if appropriate, approve the order of vacation, retaining the easement for utilities.
Questions for staff? Mike?
Chuck, several years ago, we talked about some activity that may happen on 23rd Street as far as the widening of the street and all of that.
You can see some of the right-of-way. I mean, we would have to acquire a right-of-way and potentially even, depending on what you wanted to do, even possibly buy businesses. I guess that was off the picture here. But you can see the right-of-way is all along through here. There's only this property and maybe a couple others along 23rd, the adjacent property. You'd have to buy a lot of right-of-way if you wanted to widen that on that side. It's not consistent in any fashion.
Okay, well, I just remember several years ago, KDOT was here, and we had talked about, you know, there was plans about somewhere way down the line, a future of the potential of widening 23rd Street, and I came through town and that it was going to happen, you know, along this part of the road. But I didn't know if there was any reason that that might affect that decision, but...
We did send this up to KDOT. They didn't have any plans in the foreseeable future.
Guess that took care of that then. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, we'll conduct a public hearing. Motion open.
Moved.
Dever, Amix. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Meeting's open. Any member of the public wish to comment? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Dever, Amix. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Closed. 4-0. Commission?
Pretty straightforward, as long as KDOT doesn't see a need. So with that, I...
You've got a little more information on the table, as in the completion of the South Lawrence Traffic Way, so...
Yeah, so that probably...
If that happens, then you're not probably going to need additional lanes there.
Okay. I would make a motion then that we approve the vacation of the right-of-way for McConnell Edition at Lot 1.
Amix. Carter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Carries 4-0. Next item on the agenda is to consider following items related to 785 Maple Street. Staff? Staff?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Brian Jimenez, Code Enforcement Manager for the City of Lawrence. Before you tonight is to hear two resolutions simultaneously, 6980 and 6981, regarding the exterior yard conditions and the structure conditions at 785 Maple. To give you a little bit of background, on June 5th, you adopted Resolution 6975, which would set the hearing date for tonight regarding the structure conditions. Since that time, we also applied the other resolution for the exterior yard conditions so we could take them both before you tonight at the same time. To give you a little bit of background, this house in question had suffered a significant fire in May of 2011. Our office issued a building permit October 31st of last year. On that building permit, there was one inspection on a gas line that was inspected and approved. My staff within the Code Enforcement Divisions initiated action regarding the structure and the yard conditions in February of this year. We had several contacts with the owner, Ed Flint Jr., who's in attendance tonight. May 1st of this year, after seeing no progress, we initiated a search warrant. We went and inspected. On that memo that was provided to you on the June 5th meeting, you were provided with a summary of what we found, a lot of pictures. Last week, on July 17th, I went back to do a follow-up inspection, spoke to Mr. Flint at the scene at the property. He let me go in and, and look at the property again, saw very minor changes to the yard, saw very, very minor changes to the structure itself, took a few pictures, speak for themselves. Nothing had changed from the previous memo. So, that's why we're here tonight. It's also important to note that the building permit expired June 16th of last month. We have made the decision that, based on the lack of progress, that if there's another building permit issued for this property, we're going to require the contracted, the licensed contractors for general and all the subs to ensure that the rock, the work is completed in a co-compliant manner. There's a lot of structural issues there. Basically, the first floor of the house is exposed. It's basically to the, to the raptor studs. The basement's pretty much in disarray. To make matters worse, we had Mr. Flint stealing electricity from the property, and he was cited for that. To make matters even worse than that, we have a strong belief that there's still occupancy occurring there. The structure, it's nowhere near habitable, and I believe there's a couple options for you to consider tonight. One would have a licensed contractor sign up, get a building permit ASAP, and then somehow we figure out how Mr. Flint has the financial resources to continue this project. If those two things cannot be done, I think our only option is to proceed with demolition of the structure. And that's all I have, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is the property owner here?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to speak? If you'll state your name, please.
Edward Flint. I really don't know what to say. I'm sorry that we all have to be here on my account. I feel like I've been doing a fair job of what I've been doing, and there's been many improvements. It's not going as fast as everybody probably would like, but I've been doing all the work myself, and I just, I just need more time to work out situations, and I, I don't, I don't know what to say except for I'm sorry.
Any questions for the property owner? Okay, thank you. The other gentleman, did you want to say something? Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, Commissioner Amix wants to ask a question.
Mayor Flint, from the, from the pictures that we have before us, you living in that house? Somebody living in the house?
No, sir.
All that food was left from the fire?
Um, I mean, it's just, I have nowhere to put stuff. That's just, that's just, I mean...
Okay, and the...
That's my only residence to put my stuff. I had a shop that I had for three years, and I just recently let that go. When I did that, I just had an overabundance of things to put, and I've steadily been eliminating stuff, and I, I mean, that's basically how I've been funding what I've been doing, and I still have a few things left that I can do, and...
Okay, so...
Yeah, I mean, I just, I have nowhere to put nothing. I mean, that's where I...
Okay, well, I was noticing that there was, oh, electrical plug-in extension cord things in here that obviously are hooking up your television and other items. Those, those things work?
That's all been removed.
Oh, that's all gone? Okay. Okay.
I mean, I have pictures of before the house, and I have pictures now of it.
Staff? When were these pictures taken that were on our computer, please?
The, there's five pictures that were taken last July, I mean, last week, July 17th, on the memo dated July 18th, and then the previous pictures were taken...
May 1st.
I think around May 23rd of this year. I did go inside the house last week. Didn't see anything significant that had changed previously. Had also been in the house prior to May 7th, uh, May as well. I was probably in the house February and probably one other time between May, so I've been in the house about four times. Every time I go there, Mr. Flint's there. He tells me he's working on the house. That could be so. That could be true. But based on what we've seen with the extension cords, the multiple power strips, the food, the dogs are there. Someone comes to the, a door or walks around the side yard every time we visit, there's only one, one conclusion I can come to, and that, that they're living there. And it's very unsafe to do that. We did condemn the house when we did the, the search warrant, and using a sports analogy, it's a slam dunk from our standpoint on this, that they don't get much worse than this. There's a ton of work that needs to be done there. Mr. Flint can't give me a, a cost analysis, but it's well into the thousands of dollars. We're looking at plumbing, electrical, mechanical, structural, sheet rock, light fixtures, you know, toilets, sinks, you name it. So, you know, there's no egress in the basement except for a rear staircase. It doesn't meet code. So, I mean, the, the problems there are substantial.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could ask one more question of the owner?
Sure.
Mr. Flint, you had, you had a fire at your house?
Yes, sir.
And was there insurance settlement on the property?
There was.
Okay. Do you have the means with that insurance settlement to hire a contractor and clean the house and have the repairs done?
I collected, the city collected 11,000 that I've received back, and the other 63,000 I sent in for the house. So, basically, I have no payments due till 2019. I didn't know that everything was going to be so difficult and that I really had a time limit per se to actually be totally done with the house, so...
The 63,000 you, you paid down on your loan?
Yeah.
Instead of repairing it?
Um...
Some of your funds went to rebuilding that house.
Basically, yeah, 'cause...
Okay. Well, I appreciate the fact...
I mean, I've done quite a bit to the house, and, and what's being said about it, you know, I have all that stuff. It's just getting it put in and done. On top of getting rid of everything that I need to get rid of and cleaning the property.
All right.
I've just been overwhelmed this last year with multiple things besides just the house burning.
Okay, the other gentleman there, would you like to make a comment? And if you'll state your name and address, please.
My name's Corey Warner, 420 North Street, number 56.
Okay.
I guess I'm here to help, you know, defend his case, and so to speak. I'm his daughter's boyfriend. We have taken pictures of the house the day of the fire, and took in pictures just previously this evening to show, you know, how far we have came with all the cleaning up and rebuilding. So, maybe if you guys would like to see the pictures, it's showing, you know, all the progress that we have made with the house. We also wrote up a little petition, if you will, for maybe, lack of better term. We wrote up a little letter stating our case and requesting that the City Commissioners approve that Ed be able to get an extension to continue to rebuild his home as long as the certain regulations and guidelines are followed. So, we actually have a request written on here with, oh, no, we've got several lifelong Lawrence residents to sign it, and several immediate neighbors to his residence on 785 Maple to also sign it, to request that we just, you know, be able to get an extension to continue to rebuild the home.
Okay, you can present whatever you want to me, and I'll share it with the commission. If you want to show us these pictures, I presume they're on your computer screen?
Yeah.
Are you got...
There are free pictures there, too.
If you want to come here and show us, you've got five minutes at your behalf to show us what you want us to see. Everybody wants to come over this way.
This is the thing that we have wrote with signatures. The signatures with the addresses are, as I said, immediate neighbors, and then the others are lifelong interests. These are the day of the fire. Maybe I should, the day after the house fired.
Okay. Got a pretty good idea.
And then, right here, are pictures that was actually taken earlier of the house. And see, like, all that would have been this right here. That's not that. See what I'm saying? And right here, the front of the house, this would have been all that.
Okay.
And then this side of the run down there. So, I mean, we just tried to, you know, take pictures to show that, you know, for not having any, like, real income or ways to utilize the resources we need to rebuild the house properly, we just done as much as we could, you know? These are just the pictures of how the house looks today, obviously, as it was.
It's the outside of the house, so what about the inside? You got pictures of that?
Uh, no, I didn't take none of the inside, no.
Okay.
Here you go. I'll give you these back.
I know that there are no open, open raptors and stuff inside the house, and the whole house has floors in it, so I have no... When they came the first time, I had been redoing the kitchen floor when they came in with their warrant. That was the only time that the floors were open when I was doing that work. But that's been a long since filled.
Mayor, if I... Thank you. Brian, the pictures again that you, the second set you've got here are taken on the 17th?
That's correct.
Okay. And you've seen the pictures that were taken last Tuesday?
No, sir.
Okay.
I have nothing to hide. I, I let him in on my...
Yeah. I just asked that, 'cause the pictures you, you showed us are well and good, and those show some improvements, but these pictures here were taken recently as well, and they, they show the interior.
There's, there's just more materials there with, you know, just some belongings of mine that make it look...
Brian, can you pull that, yours up on the screen there, our pictures?
Do you want the...
The ones taken last Tuesday? Scroll on down to the interior ones.
I did take a lot of interior pictures because they were so identical to the ones I gave you previously that...
There's a few in here, though.
Yeah, there are a few. And then, obviously, you understand that, you know, we, we're wanting to make the property if he doesn't clean it up as long as he's there.
Yep.
The first one there, if you're looking at that, inside the front doors, the front doors, if you're looking to east, there's a window up there towards the ridge that's letting sunlight in. But you can just see, it's just, it's just, there is, like Mr. Flint said, there is a lot of stuff there, personal stuffs, the doors, miscellaneous stuff, just running about.
Can I stop talking back there?
Brian, we please talk on the microphone, so...
Sorry.
Or people in the back could stop talking, please, so we can hear. Okay. First picture, looking east as you walk in the front door, it's framed, but there's a, I have serious concerns from a structural standpoint, because it's one of those houses that looks like they put a roof on top of another roof, and where's the load bearing capacity? There's some studs that have been notched out for various reasons. So, like I told Mr. Flint last week, we, we need a licensed framing contractor to, to look at everything in there. The second picture there is basically front of the house, looking towards the rear. This is on the other side of the house. As you can see, it's, it's open, pretty bad shape. A lot of work needs to be done. And you don't have to go through them all. I just wanted you to pull them up. And then, there's just one more. Sure. If you look real closely at that, you can see where I'm talking, um, let me see.
That's all existing before the fire.
Yeah, that's all existing, but now it's opened up, so we can see.
One, the person at the microphone is the person who's going to speak, and then, as soon as he's done, I'll call on the next person. We can't, can't hear two people talking at once, please.
There are some previous conditions, but now we see them. So, it's different than having an enclosed wall where we have no idea what's behind it, so that's what we have.
Thank you. I give your group one more shot at the microphone, and I want to see if any other people want to speak to this issue. Did you want to say anything else?
I just, I...
Okay.
I mean, all that that he's pointing out is existing. It was built in 72 or 1, and I know that that's not right. I pointed it out to him, but, I mean, first things first, and time's another. So, that's all I'm asking for.
Why don't you have a seat there, and let's see if there's other public comment. Anybody else want to speak to this issue? Please. Name, please.
I do, and my name's Toni Flint. I'm Edward's daughter. I was actually there, like, you know, obviously, living there when the, when it all went down. A lot of this, honestly, it's my dad, you know, one-man team type thing. He has had help from his girlfriend, but basically, every, all the cleanup, they've got rid of all that. I don't know if you seen, looked at the pictures Corey provided. I mean, I grew up in that house, and I would love for there to be a continuance, you know? It's a house I grew up in. I know that there's things, you know, that need work, that may have to do some with my dad's, you know, being stubborn, but, I mean, that, that was his, that's his life, you know? That's the house that he's raised his family in, and there's been a lot going on in this last year that it just hit home, in a sense. We've lost, we had 13 dogs. It's a commercial property. We had 13 dogs. We got three now. I mean, it's, I mean, we've just lost so much, and we would just really, really, really love for, you know, I would love anyways, for my kids to go there. You know what I mean? I mean, that's the house I grew up in. I don't know, I just, I guess that's pretty much what I got to say. It'd be appreciated.
Okay. Thank you very much. Other comments?
I do. I'm Carla Dowd, and I'm his girlfriend. What they're not saying is that we did ask for the city to help us with the fire repairs. I know that you guys have grants to help do remodeling. They said we're not eligible. We filled out grants for the air conditioning and heating, which is 5,000. Can't do... Can't do it because we hadn't lived there for a year. He's been in that neighborhood for fifteen years, he's lived in that house. But we weren't eligible for that help because we weren't there because of the fire. So what should he do? Is what we're asking. I'm asking you to let him continue. Help us if you can. If there, if for some reason we can come up with the twenty-five thousand from you guys to help rebuild the house, that's fine. We do have electrician right now. Tomorrow I'm picking up paperwork. The electrician said that he would help us with that. We have a plumber. We're just looking for the last two. And that's it.
What's the paperwork you're picking up?
A new permit. Okay?
One else wish to comment? Sir?
Name is Brent Sloan. I live two twenty-nine Arizona Place. I own the property at seven eighty-nine Maple Street. I urge the commission to consider actions rather than the pleadings. It says, is he capable of actually following through and making this work? I've lived there, you know, worked there, almost lived there, all these years, and noticed that he's got an ongoing salvage operation. He drags stuff in, drags stuff out. It'll be clean almost one day, and more stuff drug in the next. And note that that property is zoned residential. Because of all the salvage operation he's had going on, I've actually had to put up a fence between him and me to keep all the debris from encroaching upon my side so I can at least get in my driveway. Now, I noticed the, your, they mentioned that there was a theft of utilities. Well, there's a prior theft. So whoever it was took a lot of effort to string in a wire down the north side of my property, down the top of the chain link, the pipe of the chain link fence, pulled it apart, dropped it down to the ground, run it up the utility light pole, and latched into the live electricity up there. Even went to bother to paint the wire gray and brown, whoever it was. All that ingenuity, all that effort could have been put into a house. If he can't afford utilities, how can he afford to work on it? All those signatures from everybody, they should be donating and helping. This is, and also the, not only electricity, but Steve Taylor there, lives to the north of my shop, sees Ed Flint hop over the fence and hook up to my water. He has no utilities. I get there in the morning, I leave in the evening. He's living there to my belief. And the only reason I haven't complained is because I haven't seen him keep that child in there with him overnight. Looked like a three-year-old. And frankly, I'm getting tired of the stench waiting in the back door of my shop. You know he has no utilities, and you know he's staying there. So give that some thought.
Thank you. Mel? Okay. Just a public hearing.
Ready for comment?
Yeah, I'd just say, I don't really have faith that the resources are there to really speed this work up and get this done fast. And being how the property is condemned, and it does sound like you're, have been living in it while condemned, it's condemned for good reason. I think that it needs to, needs to go down. It's a shame to lose the home you grew up in, but it is a material thing, and safety first. This is a condemned building, it's being lived in, and I don't see enough progress. Ignoring the condemned, the fact that it's condemned is something that makes me hesitate to work with it any further anyway, just out of principle, I guess, so...
Question for staff, please. The action is, under resolution number sixty-nine eighty, we may, we would declare the structure unsafe and dangerous in order, the owner to repair or remove the structure within a specified period of time. What time length is appropriate?
Well, in our, both resolutions have the date of August the fifteenth, which is, you know, a little over two weeks away. It's one of those things that we put that in there, but you can amend that however you would so wish. I would think the only way that, like I said initially, with, that we would ever consider a building permit on this is if we had everyone that was on that permit licensed, and we would have to watch it very carefully, that make sure that licensed people were indeed doing the work. And then, you know, once, if we go that route, then we have the, the idea that we have to see where it goes from there. I mean, it could stall, it could be right back before you, or it could possibly succeed.
What do you, what's your take on the statement that they're picking up a permit, the electrician's picking up a permit tomorrow?
Well, I've been, I've been told previously, at least, at least once, maybe twice, that they would have a permit pulled before this meeting tonight. That never happened. I visited the property, and I tried to articulate as clearly as I could that when we got to this point tonight, I mean, the city was, you know, we were, we were meeting, you know, serious business. We had run its course, and when there were no other options other than go before you tonight to seek demolition of the property. I echo Commissioner Carter's statements that I'm very hesitant to believe that this will be a success, just based on the fact that we're fourteen months into it, and look where we are. We're very far away, and then to throw in the exterior yard conditions on top of that, it's, and if he's a one-man show, it's a big chunk to chew off.
And what, what would you have to say about the statement that was made that the gentleman may be running a salvage operation?
Well, I think, based on what I've seen, I can't come to any other conclusion that that's accurate. We have, we've had junked vehicles, there, there was a junked race car in the yard as recently as yesterday that was in the driveway. There's many, many tires in the backyard, there's, there's been motors lying around. There's all kinds of stuff in the backyard. There's a, a, you can barely see a Vega back there that Mr. Flint told me what it was. You can only see the front end. I mean, the pictures that I did take just last week clearly demonstrates that it's in bad condition. And to quote Mr. Flint, he said it was basically a Sanford and Son operation going back to the, to the sitcom that many of us watched when we were younger. So I, it, I, me and Mr. Flint have gotten along pretty well on this whole, he, I think he fully understands where I'm coming from. He's obviously a apologetic knight, but I think he doesn't see the big picture of what the city is wanting him to do and what needs to happen for us to leave him alone and not have an open code violation case there. Just the cleanup in the yard alone is substantial. And has that improved? Maybe, maybe some, but like the neighbor said, some days it may look better, some days it looks worse, and things come and go, and things may be moved around. So, you know, that's where we're at.
Other questions for staff?
I'm concerned that we'll continue on, and we'll be here six months from now in the same situation.
Here are a couple of questions. Brian, Mr. Flint made reference to eleven thousand dollars that was given the city.
Yes.
And what is that for?
Well, there's insurance proceeds requirement based on state statute that when there's a value damage exceeding so much of the fair market value, that those monies are given to our city finance department, and those monies are held until, you know, building permits either issued or the property is taken down by the owner themselves. I wasn't part of that decision-making process, so those monies were given to Mr. Flint. But in theory, those monies would have been held by us until repair happened, or he took it down, or we went and took it down for him, and then returned any money that was left over in the, from the demolition cost.
So we don't have the money?
We do not have the money.
We have no money.
Okay, so if, if it happens, as his friend said a minute ago, they walk in, ask for a building permit with licensed individuals, does that give them the opportunity to proceed in the repair of this, or are we changing this, mayor, to just make it demolition?
I mean, that's, that's your discretionary call. You can make it...
Well, I just see repair or demolition, and I just want to make sure that, understand, do they have, still have the opportunity between now and August fifteenth to come in and get those necessary permits?
I think we would give them that opportunity to see what they could do, and then we could possibly bring that back to you for, for further discussion. I mean, if, these are always tricky because we like to give property owners the ability to, the benefit of the doubt, so to speak, to make one last effort, sometimes that doesn't turn out so well. If we gave them till August fifteenth to submit the building permit applications with all the licensed contractors, and we give them one more shot, that's an option we can do. Or we could say, time period's been long overdue. You approve the resolution with the appropriate language to demolish, and then we take action within several days to take it down.
Well, Commissioner Carter makes, you know, a good point. I mean, you know, the property is condemned, and whether somebody's living there or not, you know, I'm hearing a lot of things that says that there may be, but, you know, I don't know that for sure. I think any property owner has, you know, the, the opportunity to come in and save their property from being removed. But the thing that happens is, in this particular case, is, as was said earlier, if somebody, you know, this Mr. Flint comes in and, you know, has a licensed contractor with all the necessary licensed individuals to repair, you know, this property and bring it up to city code, you know, he's going to have between now and August fifteenth to do that. I just want to make sure that that's exactly what we're saying, or we're going to go ahead and just order the demolition of the property.
Right. I mean, we've had instances before, for some of these commissioners before, where we've, we've went as far as saying, you need to, you know, give us so much money and that we'll put it into escrow, and, and to show good faith that you have the financial resources to do that. Saying you'll get a permit and licensed contractors is one thing. Being able to do it and finish it and pay for it is a completely separate thing. I'm concerned significantly in this case that that won't happen. And one of the main reasons is they took insurance proceeds. Where is that money? It's gone. I mean, I've never been told what they did with it, and really, it's not my business, but to me, it would be common sense that you take that money and you apply it to materials and labor to start rehabbing it. Now, I know there was some work done on the exterior walls and stuff because I've seen, you know, the video of the fire, which was substantial. But as the pictures demonstrate, we are a long ways away.
Comments, others?
Yeah, I appreciate the effort they've made on the outside of the building. It's clear that they've done a lot on the outside, but the problem is the inside of the building appears relatively untouched, and it appears like people are trying to live there based on comments on people who live nearby and/or pictures taken by our own city representatives. So I would be in favor of, you know, identifying the financial wherewithal to fix it, hiring the contractors and repairing it rather than demolishing it, but we haven't had too good a track record of extending these things over time and taking people's word for it. So I'd like to learn from that and maybe approve the resolution initially and have Mr. Flint provide us the financial wherewithal and the contractors to fix it. If he can't, then we have to follow the rules.
Yeah. Vice Mayor, I agree with that, and I think, again, I think you give the owner the opportunity...
Absolutely.
...to make good on this. You know, it's awfully unfair to, you know, folks that live next door to the property to, you know, to have to live by this, you know, for a fourteen-month period. I appreciate the work that Mr. Flint's doing in trying to do it on his own. I mean, you know, I love doing remodel work, oh, boy. But I, I do think that the responsibility here is that we make sure that this property is brought up to code as soon as we can. I think that we do have, you know, Mr. Flint does have to have the means to be able to get this property done, and I think that they have to, he has to show that he has licensed people that's going to come forward and do it. And I think that that's the only way that I would put a stay on the resolution. But I think that we've got to set it in motion, you know, we'll have the next twenty days to, to do exactly what you said, ma'am, and that's pull the permits. So I would suggest that, at least my feeling as mayor, is that he has to show the wherewithal, and he has to pull the permits to get this done. So essentially, Hugh, I say we approve the resolution. It sets out the timeframe. If it's not done by the fifteenth, you know, to the satisfaction of staff, you know, to give them the necessary building permits, property's going to be taken down.
But on the alternative, if they come in, can show the financial wherewithal, have a contractor, they can get started and repair it instead of having it removed?
That's our order, repair, demolition.
Right.
And then we'd set a timeline for repair at that point.
Right.
Okay, and then with regards to the other resolution, we'll just do these, just like that.
Well, we've got to clean up the backyard, or the yard. It's got to go.
Does that have a time? Why not?
May I? We have...
No, ma'am, not, not right now.
Most completely cleaned the front and the back.
Okay, just meant staff answer first, please.
The way that resolution works, mayor, is if you adopt that resolution, then the property owner has twenty days to complete the cleanup. If at that time, upon reinspection, it doesn't happen, then we go in and we abate it and all costs are assessed to the property. We need everything gone, pretty much. I mean, we don't want to say half of this and half of this. We want everything gone, because I think there's a track record there of, of the salvage-type business. We need, we need it clean, all exterior storage, front, rear, side yards.
That's fair.
Very straightforward.
Well, then...
And ma'am, I'll give you one last comment. It's unusual, but we'll do it.
Sorry.
That's all right.
We did get everything out of the front yard. The only thing that is left is a boat, a mower, and the race car. That's the only thing left in the front, all debris. Everything has been cleaned up. Everything on the side, on back behind the privacy fence is all clean. You can walk all back through there. We've done that in the last two or three days.
What, what, what does the race car do, I mean, there, what is...
It is a working race car. It has a, it is a dirt race car. He's been trying to sell it, and he does have a gentleman that's interested in it.
Okay.
And that will be another three thousand that'll go to the house.
Okay. Break it. Well, since you've done such a marvelous job on cleaning the front and side, it seems like you'll be able to comply with this resolution within twenty days.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We'll wish you the best.
Any further?
Best of luck. And entertain a motion to approve both these resolutions.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve resolution number sixty-nine eighty and sixty-nine eighty-one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries four zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to receive an update on eleven oh six Rhode Island regarding the exterior yard and structure code violations.
Okay, me again. May fifteenth of this year, we had a, a hearing, and at that time, we had two resolutions, much like we just completed, for exterior yard conditions and structure violations. During that hearing, we learned that there was going to be two auctions held for the exterior yard cleanup in end of May and end of June. Those auctions have been completed. So the exterior yard conditions, we believe, are so very close to being compliant. There's just a few things that I am confident that the Barland family will remove those. We're going to call the exterior yard violations and compliance now. The more major concern is obviously the structure conditions of the principal house, which faces Rhode Island. There's two small makeshift accessory structures. Then there's the garage that has two garage doors. And then on the north side of that is the barn structure that fronts Eleventh Street and the alley on the northeast corner of the property. Your direction at that time was for this to be brought back, last week's meeting, but due to the meeting being at three, we deferred it until tonight. At, at that meeting, on May fifteenth, you agreed to come back and hear... At that meeting, on May 15th, you agreed to come back and hear an update and also articulated to the Barland family that you would like to see a plan to either sell the property or to renovate it and come back with some good hard facts and details of how that would be accomplished. I met with Mr. Brian Barland the day after the state commission, gave him some code sections that I thought might help him determine which way the family would go. I also informed them that the meeting was moved to tonight. Didn't hear anything from the family until last Thursday at 3:00. He called me and asked me if I could meet him at the property. I ran over there, met him, did a, did a walk through the exterior yard, took a look inside the structures, took a look inside the house. So there's been substantial stuff removed from the yard. The pictures that are attached to this memo tonight show that. But now here's the important question is where do we go forward with the structures? Since this posting of this memo, Brian asked, well, previous to posting this, Brian asked last week if we could defer this a couple of weeks for them to gather more information. And we kept it on the agenda tonight. I believe there may be some representatives from Hernley and Associates that have agreed to work up some plans to identify some solutions to the property, whether that is adding buildings, remodeling the buildings that they have, taking down some of the buildings, et cetera. So that's really a quick development. Lynn Zoller and our planning side is going to meet with those gentlemen either tomorrow or Thursday. I don't have confirmation when that meeting's going to take place. It is my belief that we initiate the demolition process tonight. We've been dealing with this for a very long period of time. We will send that to the HRC for their review without a replacement plan based on the historic environs, implications. It's a contributing structure to the North Rhode Island Street District that would most likely be denied without a replacement plan based on their initial review back in April. So then that, if we go that route, we would then appeal that decision to you for you to make a determination. Hopefully, we won't have to do that. Hopefully, something constructive comes to the forefront here in the next week or so or two weeks where we got a good idea of what the Barland family plans to do. I know they're in attendance tonight, so there might be some more developments that have happened since last week that I'm not aware of regarding potentially selling or the rehab. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Questions? Thank you. Anyone else like to talk about this item from the public?
Is it appropriate at this point, of course? My name is Brian Barland. And Brian has basically brought you up to speed as to what's going on in the yard. We've obviously had the two auctions. One had to do with everything that was out in the yard and that's all basically cleared out. It was mostly cars, steel, a bunch of other things. That was basically part of a salvage operation that my dad operated for 50 years, okay? That's all gone. As part of that process that we started three months ago, four months ago, that was part of all that organization, every one of those structures was full of things, okay? Those things have all been cleared out, sorted. That was kind of what the second sale was all about. The warehouse is still full of, three-quarters full, it's a two-story warehouse. It's just three-quarters of the lower story is full of still the old Packard parts and some other architectural items, some big tall doors and a back bar from a drugstore. That is what's basically remaining of everything that was packed into those buildings. So we've spent a lot of time taking care of those items. So now we have some room to work, you know, to process what needs to be done and do any repairs that need to be done. It's still going to be an ongoing process of eliminating the Packard car parts and so on. That's going to be an ongoing process because we've got no, nothing else to do with them but get rid of them. So that's where we've really concentrated our efforts, is all that. You can't see that from the street or the sidewalk unless you look over the fence. So there's been a lot of work, not very visible work from, from the general public, so to speak. Now we're moving on to the next phase. We haven't done much since the sale. You know, we've all kind of put our family lives on hold for those three months. So we, there hasn't been that much done in the last three weeks or weekends, so to speak. There has been, and there will continue to be, some progress made every week. It's not a lot of progress, but we're moving into the next phase now of where we're going to approach the repair and the deferred maintenance for the structures that were there. You know, it needs paint, it needs repairs on the, on the house itself. The warehouse needs a roof. So we're moving into that phase of taking care of those things, making them weatherproof and continuing from there. The reason that we requested the deferment of this meeting for a couple more weeks, more weeks, we're under contractual agreement with, you know, Hernley and Associates to look at the property overall and see what we can do according to codes and, you know, what city staff will allow us to do and what we want to do on that property as far as additional structures or removal of structures or so on. There are a number of structures, real minor things that could come down. I've talked with, oh, the, the HRC lady, Lynn, about that. Of course, you don't want to process a, a partial demolition request for the minor buildings if there's, if you're going to request like a major portion of it, the garage part or something like that. So we haven't proceeded with that until we find out this additional information from, you know, the professionals that we've hired to provide us with that information. We know we still have ongoing obligations, even though that's kind of the big picture that we're headed for. You know, we know we still need to do maintenance items and repair items to the house main itself and to the warehouse that we have no doubt at all are going to stay, you know. So we don't feel that's wasted effort or wasted money. So we know we still need to move forward with those things. But again, I, we would request deferral of some action tonight, I guess, until we get that additional information in a couple of weeks. And Mike Myers with Hernley and Associates has indicated that they can provide that information. They'll be meeting with city staff to find out and develop an overall plan and exactly what they feel will be appropriate and what is allowed by codes for the property and the zoning. So that's, I'll be glad to answer any questions in regards to that.
Okay. So last time you were here, we heard your story and you said you were going to have two auctions and you did.
Yeah.
And furthermore, according to this, according to our agreement, that you were to present a plan either to sell the property or to renovate by July 17th. And because we didn't, we weren't here last week, we moved it to the 24th, so you actually got another
Week.
Extra week. And I guess I got to say, where's the plan?
Well, that's, that's what I'm telling you is that we're bringing that information to you in two weeks.
Okay.
Okay? I'm telling you right now, the
I guess I didn't hear the two weeks.
The immediate plan is we're, we're proceeding with repairs to the property that need to be done.
Okay. And you have the financial wherewithal to accomplish this?
Yeah.
Okay. You have the will to accomplish it?
Yes.
Because as you heard in the earlier round of demolition derby here, that we have, we get a lot of people who say, oh, give me another six months or give me another year or I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. And we keep having people come back in and it doesn't get done and there's always one reason or another. So, you know, I think those are fair questions for us to ask if you have the money and if you have the will to do it and if you're going to do it. And we want you to do it because those are very interesting properties. So far, you've done a good job with the two auctions. I went to one of them. You did have a genuine ultra-collection of older amusing kinds of items. Don't know how to say it any nicer. But, but, so you're suggesting in two weeks, you're going to have this plan of action?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm presuming we've developed some credibility because we told you what we were going to do and I think we've pretty well performed to what we said we were going to do.
Okay. Other comments from the commission?
Well, I guess I'm wondering if we just don't look forward. If he's planning on doing this in a couple of weeks, then we set a timeline and try to adhere to the policies that we have. And then if we see the progress being made or a plan presented to you, then we can meet on that and put a stay to that and revisit this. But again, history has been, we keep putting it off and then it comes forward and then we end up doing it eventually. And no disrespect to you, but I'm trying to learn as I go. And putting timelines in place for you and for us saves everybody's time at these meetings. And I respect what you've done and I love the construction. I'd love to see and say, I just want a plan in place. And, you know, our job is to follow the rules and the guidelines of Brian by force. He's made every indication of us that you guys are doing those things except for the plan, part where we're supposed to have a plan in place by July 17th. And we don't have that. So I guess my question is why not put this in place and then assume that you're going to do what you say and then we'll have a reason to meet again and put an end to that or maybe revoke that resolution? I don't know if that's possible or not, but.
Yeah, my thought is to go ahead and initiate the demolition, you know, submit the documents and whatnot, mainly because if it doesn't happen, then we're not requiring our department that is woefully short-staffed already, is trying to do these things and to come back to initiate this, but rather to maybe need to do something to stop this from happening if it moves forward. Again, it's not, if you do as you say, then it's not going to happen. But I don't want to, I'd rather not have Brian have to come back and start this all over again if it doesn't happen.
Mayor, could I ask a question?
Please.
David, does this require a resolution for the initiation to begin? Or Scott?
My initiation, sort of, if you initiate the things with the resolution.
Is that, is that done by resolution?
Not, not for you. We're just looking for your direction. On the resolution has been adopted.
Right.
But we, the resolution that sets all this motion has been adopted, but then you gave us direction to bring this back this month and gave the applicant, or the property owner direction for the plan. What we're recommending is that you allow us to implement the resolution that you've already adopted and keep marching forward with progress on it.
Okay. In fairness to Brian and his family, I visited with you last week and, and at that point, are you under, did I understand right, are you under contract with Hernley and Associates to do this evaluation?
Yes.
Okay. And that has just proceeded in the last week, right?
Basically, yes.
So that's kind of where we are in this process is that, you know, they just, you know, became, as I understood it, were just came under contract with them to do this evaluation. And it's supposed to be
That's fine.
Very quickly.
What I'd recommend is we give them three weeks because we're not on next week. The following week, we've got a full agenda. So it would be August the 14th that we would have you back here with your plan in hand. All right? So you get an extra week if you want to go ahead with that on that basis. But we'd like to see a pretty detailed plan of action.
I mean, on the face of it, it seems very simple, but when you start looking at the tax credits and the implications of demolition and repair, it gets a little more complicated and that's above, that's above us. That's, that's what they do and they know how to pull all that information together and that's, that's where we're headed, to make a educated, you know, correct decision for the, for the property and the family.
I think, I think we have a, please do.
How come you waited until a week ago, how come you waited till a week ago to get this plan started with Hernley?
Well, all our focus, all our focus was trying to take care of the two, two major issues.
I understand.
We spent all our family energy. We felt that we could take a little time off and develop other things. Unknowns to us when we got into the whole process, of course, you know, when you have an auction, you don't know the total results. You don't even get a check for, you know, probably 10 days after that. You don't know what funds you really have to work with and so on.
So you're waiting to see what kind of money you had to work with before you started the plan?
And, you know, what did fund, so, you know, where, where can we best spend the information and the money?
Any other questions? Okay. So I'd entertain a motion to extend the, pardon me?
Oh, okay. Never mind.
To extend the time till August 14th, in which Mr. Barland will come back with a plan of action. Is that enough direction for your staff?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So, so you're saying, give them three more weeks before we put the process in place to, for this to the HRC, which is the next step?
Yeah.
That's, that's how I'm interpreting it. If you want us to do two things, if you want us to start that process with the HRC and also take a process, a plan, you know, begin the discussions about taking a plan to the HRC for repair, we can, we can kind of sort of tee both of them up, ready to go to the HRC and after August 14th, we'll know which, which way to go with it.
And 6973, in your opinion, has been abated?
Yes. I mean, I talked to Brian last Thursday and I'm confident that they're still going to use some minor cleanup, but as time goes on, that stuff is, is gone.
Okay.
Would you take more public comment?
Certainly would. Please have a seat, Mr. Bar.
I always have an opinion. There's some public comment around here. I spoke the last time.
Would you please state your name for the record?
Leslie Soden, president of East Lawrence State Association. I spoke last time about this when we were here and I remember selling it was an option and what I found concerning just now is I didn't hear any option of him speaking of selling it. It was either renovating it or demolishing it and I find that extremely concerning, especially considering LPA had an offer and even bumped it three times as far as I know. So I would like to hear if that is still an option. Thank you.
Staff, comment on it, please. I believe it states that in the resolution. The resolution's still in play, isn't it?
Yeah. But it has to be approved and then approved again in the demolition.
Brian Barland informed me last week when I met with him that selling the property is still an option to them. They're still looking at that as well. The way I understood it, and he can tell me if I'm wrong, is they're going to look at, with Hernley Associates and get cost analysis, what they may try to do with the property. And I, I'm guessing if that doesn't work out to, to work for them financially, that they, that selling of the property is still on the table. I, I am aware that there's LPAs offered or submitted offers. I'm not aware what that money value is. It's not, not part of my inquiry. But, so I, I still believe that they haven't ruled out the selling of the property. I think what they're trying to do with Hernley and Associates is get a, a very good idea based on their expertise of what they can do, what's it going to cost, et cetera, and timeframe and all that. You know, from my standpoint, if selling is the best option, then I hope that's the way they go. I'm looking for a resolution, obviously, so.
Other comments?
Yeah, I kind of like to address the sale issue. That is obviously one of the options that we can determine. That's why we're looking for the additional information as opposed to offers. Yes, we're, we have, are evaluating other offers. I would like to put to rest right now, you know, the LPA are not the white knights, you know, that are going to come and save us. You know, their first offer was for land value, okay? If somebody wants to sell me their house for land value, I'll come over and I'll talk to you tonight. All right? So their second offer, they bumped that, big amount, big 40%, okay? Big numbers. They're not the white knights to come and save me and say, hey, look, we're trying to save the deal. Okay? They got involved, they want to preserve the property. I understand that, okay? Dollars make sense. Dollars make sense also, so...
Thank you. Other comments? All right, any other discussion by the commission? Mr. Carter?
Just clarifying, the three weeks you're talking about, then, staff's recommendation is that we initiate the demolition of the structures by submitting the documents. We're saying we don't do...
We hold off on even doing that for three weeks. That's what, that's what they're, yes. But if we initiated this, and he hears from Henley within the two weeks that he says, we have the ability to stop this if he, in fact, follows through. I mean, we're still extending this.
Well, I mean, realistically, it's not going to get torn down, there's too much value in it.
Right.
I mean, so...
Period?
Well, I mean, that would be my 100% guess on it, is that there's too much value there to tear it down, and somebody's going to buy it.
You're pretty close, yeah.
I mean, so, we can say we're going to tear it down, but are we really going to tear it down? I seriously doubt it. So, I mean, I don't care which way you go, but I would like, just, I guess I'd be more inclined to see what he comes back with in three weeks with a plan, and then we can decide if it's a credible plan or not.
Yeah, and the only reason I'm inclined to agree with you is because he did have two things, massive tasks to accomplish, however, I still think they could have been done simultaneously, which is why I was willing to move forward with submitting it to HRC for the review. However, Mr. Barland's proven some, about, he's done quite a bit to the outside of the property. I believe he's, you know, has a good reason why he didn't, now he knows what money he has to deal with and what he can and can't do, including paying to a historical architect to evaluate the building, which is not cheap.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's underway, I'm more inclined to move forward and to just move this forward, since we're only four of us.
Sure.
I could see it being stuck here for a while, so...
Yeah.
All right. Lost track, is there a motion on the table?
There's still, there was a motion.
Still a motion to defer for three weeks.
I'll second it.
To defer for three weeks, with the understanding we're going to get a credible plan back at that time. So, it's been moved by AMEX, seconded by Dever, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, carries four zero. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is consider adoption of the proposed findings of facts and conclusions of law concerning the application for the design review of 910 LC, Ninth and New Hampshire Project.
Thanks, Brian.
Staff, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. On June 26, 2012, the City Commission conducted a hearing in Enray, application for design review of 910 LC, which was case number DR 1218511. During that hearing, the City Commission received evidence from proponents and opponents of the proposed project, which is an apartment building or a multi-use hotel at 900 New Hampshire Street. Based on the relevant factors at the conclusion of that hearing, the City Commission found that there was no feasible and prudent alternative to the proposal, and that all, the program included all planning to protect the listed properties from harm. At the conclusion after that, the City Commission directed staff to prepare findings of fact and conclusions of law. That has been done, and we present it tonight for your approval, modification, or, you know, direction regarding any revisions you might like. I would point out that there are one substantive change since the version was posted, and that had to do with the mechanical systems. The finding, I think, was a little bit unclear as regarding whether it was inside or outside. I think the finding of the City Commission that night was that it would be located in such a place that it would protect the neighborhood from noise, and I think I may have misstated that in the findings, and I have corrected those findings.
What I am going to reset, please?
That would be paragraph, that'd be on page 10, paragraph 22J, and page 16, paragraph 32G.
Okay, so J and 32G?
Yes, 22J and 32G.
32, page 32?
What the, no, it's page 10.
Page 10.
22J, and then page 16.
16, okay. I was going to say, I only got 22 pages here. And, okay, so you say you've misstated it, so how should it?
The way I have revised, and it's in the revised deals, 22J would state, "The mechanical systems of the proposed project will be located so as to reduce any noise generated thereby, and will be insulated from the adjoining neighborhood." And then the other change would be, G, "The mechanical systems of the proposed project will be insulated to protect the neighbors from noise pollution." I think the original version had that those items would be located inside, and it's, that's, I don't think, a correct statement of what the evidence was presented.
Okay.
And other than that, I don't have anything more, so...
Questions for staff?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this, findings of fact? Okay. Don't see anybody who wants to comment on the findings of fact for the, are we out here? 910 LC. Commission discussion?
Mayor, I would move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law.
With the revisions noted?
Yes, with 22J and 32G amended as indicated by staff attorney.
Second.
Okay, moved by Dever, seconded by Carter, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, carries four zero. Okay, next item on the agenda is to consider the following items regarding the proposed establishment of a tax increment financing district for Ninth and New Hampshire Project. Staff, lead off with their comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Diane Stoddard, Assistant City Manager, and I'll provide a brief overview for you of the incentives that are being requested of the developer this evening related to this project. Britt Crumcano, who's the city's Economic Development Coordinator, will provide a brief summary for you of the financial reports related to this request. And additionally, Gary Anderson, the city's Bond Counsel from Gilmore and Bell is here, and he's going to walk you through the next steps related to the process, the proposed industrial revenue bond issuance and its implications for the city, and then also the legal issues for you to consider this evening. Related to the request in general, and I will be brief, but I'll be happy, Mayor, to go into any detail that the commission would like. I know that we went into a fairly extensive staff report at your June 26 meeting, so I want to be providing an overview, but careful about repeating all the things that we have provided to you previously. There are three different incentives that are requested related to this development. Again, the development is a, consists of a north and south project area for a tax increment financing district in the area of Ninth and New Hampshire. The south project area has to do with a proposed hotel development on the corner, the north or the southeast corner of that intersection. On the northeast corner, it's proposed to be a mixed-use apartment building, both of the structures involved would have underground parking and associated site improvements. The entire project is approximately $45 million in private investment. Related to the incentives, as I mentioned, that are being requested, there are three different types, the tax increment financing, which is essentially capturing the incremental increase in property tax and sales tax that relate to the improvements that are done associated with the development, a tax, a transportation development district, which is an additional 1% sales tax added within the district, and also industrial revenue bond financing, which primarily in this case have to do with the request of the developer to take advantage of a sales tax exemption on materials that are utilized in construction for these projects. I would direct your attention to the summary that we included in your agenda materials for this meeting and also the meeting on June 26, that summarized the overall projected revenues from the transportation development district and the tax increment financing district, and the estimated expenses and incentives that are requested with the project. The projected revenues total $11.8 million, and again, those are projections for the, both the TIF and the TDD revenue sources. The projected expenses total $12.7 million, and those break down as follows. There's approximately $6.7 million in costs for reimbursement to the developer for the parking garage and site improvements related to both of the facilities that would be constructed. There is included $4.2 million in that figure that relate to reimbursement of interest costs. And then there's $1.8 million that have to do with reimbursement of city-related costs. That breaks down to $900,000 for the parking garage, or, excuse me, $850,000 for the contribution toward the existing parking garage in the 900 block of New Hampshire, and approximately $900,000 for the Arts Commons Project, which would be the city acquisition of the Salvation Army property, again, that has not been finalized, but has been under general discussion. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Britt to summarize for you the financial reports that are involved with this, and then Gary will also speak, and then any of us would be available to answer any questions that you have.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Britt Crumcano, City of Lawrence Economic Development Coordinator. It is my understanding that Springstad presented detailed walkthrough analysis on their reports at your June 26 meeting, so I'm only going to briefly summarize and recap their conclusions here. The city did hire Springstad to perform the financial analysis for this project. They presented three reports, a feasibility analysis, which covered both the north and south project, and then a needs analysis, also known as the BUT-4 analysis, for both the north project and the south project. The financial feasibility study is required by state statute to determine if the project's benefits and other available revenues are expected to be sufficient to pay for all project costs. Springstad used the TIF eligible expenses to represent the costs and the TIF and TDD revenues to represent the project benefits. They concluded that both projects will have sufficient revenues to pay for project costs. The second determination is the effect project costs will have on outstanding bonds supported by local transient guest taxes and local sales and use taxes. Springstad concluded that there was no effect, the proposed area does not currently generate sales or use taxes, thus, there's no effect on outstanding obligations. The needs analysis, or the BUT-4 test, that determines if the projected project will not reasonably be anticipated to be developed without the adoption of financial assistance. For these reports, Springstad used a standard, a PricewaterhouseCooper standard for rates of returns on similar projects. I believe they used an internal rate of return comparing current market investment rates that developers would be expected to get off of a project. For the south project, which is the mixed-use hotel and retail, the industry standard ranges from 10% to 15% and averages 11.65%. The south project without assistance was estimated to return 2.64%. With assistance, was projected to return 5.73%. So, they concluded that the IRR without assistance falls below the current range of expected returns within the marketplace, and the project would not likely proceed without assistance. On the north project, the market's return rates ran between 5.25% and 14% with an 8.28% average. The project without assistance was projected to return 4.37% and with assistance, 6.21%. So, they concluded the same thing, that the project without assistance falls below the current market rate returns, and it would not likely proceed without assistance. So, that basically summarizes the reports that they presented. I'll be happy to answer questions, and if none, I'll turn it over to Gary Anderson for information on the IRBs.
Questions for staff?
Not at this point.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Gary Anderson, Gilmore and Bell Bond Counsel for the city. I thought it might be helpful to just sort of go over the actions that are being requested tonight, and then what the next steps, assuming you proceed tonight, are in the process, both with respect to the tax increment financing, as well as the TDD and the industrial revenue bonds. You have called a public hearing for tonight as required by a state statute in connection with the creation of the new TIF district. As you are aware, the south project area, as it's called, which is the southeast corner of Ninth and New Hampshire, is currently in the old Ninth and New Hampshire TIF district. So, one of the actions tonight you will be asked to do is the final reading of the ordinance to remove that area from the existing TIF district, so it will be eligible to be included within the new TIF district. As Diane said, you have both a north project area and a south project area. The reason that becomes important is that our understanding from the developer is that the projects will not occur simultaneously. So, one of the things that will happen next in the process is that you will be asked to call a public hearing, assuming you move forward on the actions tonight to create the district, to call a public hearing in connection with consideration of the south project plan. The north project plan, we anticipate you will receive some point later, we're not exactly sure from the developer when that would occur. So, again, to review, the four actions for tonight are, one, to hold the public hearing in connection with the creation of the new TIF district, the first reading of the ordinance to create the new TIF district on the east side, the final ordinance to remove the southeast corner from the current TIF district, and to consider a resolution of intent, as we call it, in connection with the industrial revenue bonds. And as Diane said, the sole purpose of the industrial revenue bonds in this case would be to provide an incentive to the developer so that they can purchase the construction materials and any FF and E on a sales tax exempt basis. Again, most of that incentive, quite honestly, is a state incentive because most of the sales tax is a state sales tax. By adoption of the resolution of intent, that allows the city to apply for the sales tax exemption for the project, so that that can be provided to the developer's contractor, so that they can purchase construction materials in FF and E on a sales tax exempt basis. However, you will be required at some point to issue the industrial revenue bonds in order for them not to have to refund the sales tax that they receive the exemption on, but typically, the process is that will occur later in the process, because it's basically them just using their loan to purchase the bonds. As I said, if you move forward on all of the actions tonight, the next steps would be as follows, and as you have heard us say, and I think is included in the staff memo, the tax increment financing process is procedurally intensive, and I think that's a legislative purpose. Again, it's a two-step process. One is the creation of the redevelopment district, which does a couple of things that are very important. One is, that sets the base value of the entire district, both the north project area as well as the south project area, and another key feature is that that will then start the 30-day veto period by the county and the school district. If the county or the school district pass a resolution within the 30 days following tonight's public hearing, assuming you close it, that will terminate the process of moving forward in connection with the TIF. They have sort of an unlimited veto in connection with TIF in Kansas. So, the next steps would be calling the public hearing on the redevelopment plan. The redevelopment plan would come forward to the commission, along with a redevelopment agreement, which provides sort of the business deal... agreement, which provides sort of the business deal between the city and the developer with respect to the project. You know, how much money you'll get, what the incentives are, what you have to do, when you have to do it, et cetera. So that's a very key document. It's sort of the, as we like to call it, it's the developer contractually agreeing to the promises that they make to the, to the community as part of the, the TIF process. The redevelopment plan, once it's filed with the city, will go to the planning commission as required by state statute for the so-called consistency finding. Planning commission will be asked to find that the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city for that particular area. So that, that is, uh, will occur after the plan is filed with the city clerk. Then the public hearing will be held, similar process, 30 days, at, at least 30 days after you call the public hearing, so that the community has a chance to review the redevelopment plan. There'll be a public hearing that night, and then you will be asked to consider both the redevelopment plan as well as the redevelopment agreement. Sort of as a part of this process, as Diane mentioned, the developer has requested a Transportation Development District. They will be filing a petition, which starts the process for the creation of the, of the TDD, and then that will come forward to the commission as part of this process. So with that sort of quick overview, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any at this time.
On industrial revenue bonds, the primary reason being the, the tax savings, but isn't there also significant interest savings for the bonds being issued by, through the city versus the developer getting those funds on their own?
Uh, not in this circumstance. What, what, we generally refer to these as buy-your-own-bonds. So what will happen is they'll go borrow the money from wherever they're getting the money to build the project. Part of that money, the developer will use to purchase these bonds, which are then used to pay for the construction materials and, and FF and E. So in effect, it's, they're really just taking part of their loan proceeds and running them through the industrial revenue bond, and by the magic of this, you get the sales tax exemption.
I see. They're still paying the same rate as...
Right, right. So there's really, there's no economic advantage other than the sales tax exemption.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, we should open the public meeting at this time, then, entertain a motion.
So move.
Carter, Dever, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gary's 4-0, the public meeting is open. Any public comment at this time?
I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Do you want any comments?
You'd like to make them, I'll listen to them.
I've asked Diane to put my, the perk presentation materials up there, and I don't think I'm gonna spend a lot of time on that, but I didn't want to have that showing while we're talking about our project, so we gotta have something, at least a different picture up there. So...
That's not your project, right?
Nothing else, yeah. We don't want people to think that's our project, so...
That's better.
That'd be hard-pressed to give you an incentive for that.
Exactly. Anyway, my name is Bill Fleming. I'm General Counsel of Trainer Architects. Been working on this project. You guys have seen me many times. I made a presentation a couple of weeks ago to the perk committee, so a couple of you have already seen this. I think, from a big-picture standpoint, I think the, the questions that people in the community have about this type of thing, first of all, it sounds like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money. But I think what people have to recognize are a couple of things, that are the reality of development in downtown Lawrence. One, you have very, very tight sites, very, very small sites. These are not big sites. That means the parking has to go underground, or there's a solution to the parking that's very expensive. All of these, these projects that are in downtown are in a, in a district that is zone CD, which means that the actual developers of these projects do not have to provide off-street parking. It's not required by the code, but we all know, as a practical matter, you could have a place to park a car, or people aren't gonna come down to your project. And so, we're in a little bit of a catch-22. The city doesn't have to, the developer doesn't have to provide the parking, the city doesn't have to provide the parking either, but somebody's gotta provide the parking, right? Especially in these areas. And I think the final factor, final couple factors, is because we're going underground, it's expensive, it makes it difficult to make the projects economically feasible without some assistance. All of the, all the money that comes to pay for this project is coming from the project itself. We will pay sales taxes, we'll collect sales taxes from the project, we'll collect property taxes. Property taxes are the main increment that drives this. So the, the actual tax dollars that are being generated are not money that's coming out of the, you know, the fund that's otherwise being used to help the community shelter. It's money that's coming from the project itself and going back to help pay for that parking, and the parking provides a public benefit to everyone. It gives us more places to park, more places to bring more people downtown. And I think, you know, that the other, that's the other, kind of the factor in all of this is, we wanna support downtown development, we wanna support downtown density, it's part of our overall community goal to do that, and that's what these projects do. But they've gotta have some assistance to, to make them feasible. So that's why we're here talking to you about this. So, anyway, this is our presentation. A lot of this information, because you went through the HRC process, you've already seen all this, so again, I'm, I'm really not gonna spend much time talking about this, I just wanted to show you very quickly, you know, what the, what some of the changes are, what the, what the project looks like. This is the South project, so this would be where the hotel would be. The North project would be, of course, to the north of that. We're not very, I guess, creative in our naming here, but, but these are just some of the, the illustrations. Here's the uses. We've got grocery store, retail on the first floor. We do not have a user for that yet, so we're still in the process of looking for that. We have a hotel lobby there to the, to the left there. This is a courtyard here, area. Again, a lot of these pictures and illustrations you've seen, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna bore anybody. This is just a very quick summary of the project. We've got 81 hotel units, eight apartments. Some of the apartments may become hotel units. We don't know that for sure, but that's probably what's gonna happen. So that's kind of the, the project. The, the actual project costs, keep in mind that all of these costs that we're asking for reimbursement are, have to be ineligible costs. I mean, we're not asking you to pay for the building, we're not asking you to pay for the, the refrigerator on the fourth floor, anything like that. These are only costs associated with the parking and the site improvements that go along with this, that are, have to be eligible costs under the statute. That's the total cost for the hotel project, about 3.3 million. The newspaper had a good article, I thought, the other day Chad wrote, talked about 11 million dollars. People need to recognize that that's the cost plus the interest costs. So that's kind of a, kind of a gross number of what the costs are, because obviously, it's a pay-as-you-go TIF, which means we, the developer, front all the money, and then we're entitled to get the money back, plus some interest factor over the life of the, the 20-year life of the thing. So that's, that's why that number's a little bit different than these numbers that you're seeing. Again, we also take the risk. We're not issuing bonds, we're not asking the city to pay for any money upfront. The developer pays for all the money, and the money, we only get paid back if the project generates sufficient revenues to do that. So that's, again, a very important issue and important point. These are kind of just the increments that will be generated. Sales tax, which is about 2.55%, adware and property tax, so it's, again, it's only the increase in property taxes that's, as a result of the project, that's why it's called a tax increment. The existing real estate taxes being generated would still be paid and collected in the normal fashion. And then the IRB that Gary's talked about would give us a sales tax exemption, and that's predominantly a state sales tax issue. This is just a quick summary of the North project. We're gonna have a bank drive-through banking facility, probably office use on the first floor, the rest of it'll be apartments, anywhere from 114 to 120 apartments. That's about 27.6 million dollars anticipated project costs. That's the cost there for the, the, the actual parking facility in that. Again, it's an underground parking facility, and that's just, again, some of the, the project sources. Now, on the North project, we don't really have a lot of retail use there, so there really won't be much sales tax generated, probably. I mean, it's possible we could use the, the office space as retail, but not really, we haven't really planned for that, we haven't shown that in our projections. And so, most of the increment, it'll be a real estate tax, adware and tax increment that'll be generated on that project, and it'll probably pay back, of our project costs plus interest, it'll probably pay back something close to half of what we're gonna have in it. So we'll actually have to pay the other half. We will not get probably 100% back recovery of costs on that particular project. So it helps, the density of that project helps make that work. So, anyway, that's, just summarizes our, kind of some, what you've already heard about, how we're gonna split the revenues, there's gonna be a benefit there for the city as well, to doing these projects. I'd also note that one of our project costs that we're gonna do is do some renovation work on the Social Service League building. That's not an eligible cost. We're not asking to be reimbursed for that cost. We're doing that to try to benefit the, the community and, and to make it a better project for everybody. And so, and that's it. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Thank you.
Bill, question. Visiting with a guy this afternoon, we were talking about spending time in Kansas City, and he had a state hotel this weekend downtown, Kansas City, Missouri, and found out that the parking space that they parked at cost him 15 bucks, okay? Was there consideration to just having a charge placed on that, rather than go through the TDD and all this public, the incentive process of this?
I mean, you always look at that. I think that, you know, part of the problem you have in Lawrence, Kansas, with hotel rates is we have fairly a large number of, I don't wanna sound critical, but average hotel rooms. And so, what ends up happening is we actually have a fairly low average daily rate for our hotel rooms compared to, say, a Kansas City hotels. And so, it makes it difficult to try to raise your rates and, and still keep your occupancy up in a situation like that. So if you try to tack on a $15 charge for parking...
And I'm not saying it had to be 15, but whatever the cost may be.
Well, right, I mean, we will probably charge something for parking if we think we can do that, but unfortunately, the expectation in Lawrence right now is that you park for free or almost free. I mean, you, you guys only levy a $3 parking ticket if I over, you know, if I forget to pay the, the meter. That's, you know, so that, that gives you an example of, it's not that expensive to, to, to parking downtown.
Are you lobbying?
And that's kind of the expectation, unfortunately.
Are you lobbying for higher fines?
No, 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 I'm not lobbying for that at all, so, but I think that's the difficulty of, I mean, if you go to Chicago or New York or those places, yes, you're used to paying that amount and maybe more, but it's difficult to get that here. And so, it's, you know, the average cost per parking stall is around $25,000. So do the math on that, try to collect enough revenue, pay to maintain it, clean it, and still make any money. I mean, I think, you know, when I've talked to Mr. Corliss about this before, he would claim that the revenues you generate in your parking garage are sufficient to pay the maintenance. That's about it. You're breaking even, you don't even have enough money to pay for bond costs.
One question. Can you elaborate there on the North project, where you say you're only getting back about half of the costs? You're talking about on the, the garage itself, plus the site improvements, the three...
Yeah, I mean, the, we're kind of, the, the rough estimates kind of roughly based on our South project, 'cause the, the underground garages are about the same size, and the site improvements we're estimating will be about the same. That, those two sites are actually almost exactly the same size lot, interestingly enough, because there are, you know, a number of downtown, old downtown blooded lots. The, the North project, because it's a hotel, generates a fairly significant amount of sales tax and sales tax increment, so that makes, that's kind of what tips the balance in that deal. It generates a lot more revenue, whereas on the North project, you have, first of all, you have existing improvements there. So you've got a building there, it's on the tax rolls, it's kind of an interesting issue because it was actually owned by a public utility until we bought it, and so the public utility assessment rate's 30%. It's actually higher than any other commercial property. And so, when we take this off the tax rolls, you know, whatever taxes are being paid continue to be paid. And so, your increment is much smaller there, to begin with, because you have an existing improvement and a higher overall assessment. And then, you know, we don't have a lot of retail uses in this building, and so really, you know, it's just mainly kind of what that increment is, and, and then looking at kind of how much that would generate once the project's completed. And the other issue, too, is when you do residential units, you're taxed at 11.5% assessment rate for residential versus like the hotels, the 25%. So you have double the valuation in your hotel than you do in your residential unit. So, you know, it might be, might be twice the value of project, but it's only, it's on the tax rolls for basically the same amount as your hotel.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you. Public comment?
Mayor, Commissioner Kirk McClure, you're engaged in a real estate investment analysis process tonight. You're being asked to sit as loan officers on an 11 million dollar deal. By any standard, that's a pretty large loan. Number one step you always look at with any real estate investment analysis is, will the market support this? If we build it, will they come? What I find most frustrating about this process, you have nothing before you that answers that question. You should not even be considering being at this point without the market analysis to support this. Do some real simple arithmetic with me. 90 rooms, 365 nights, industry standard 60% occupancy, you need 20,000 room stays. New stays to this town to make that project viable without hurting our other investments. You have nothing that answers the question about, do we have latent demand for 20,000 room stays? How do you know the number's 20,000? How do you know the number isn't 2,000? In fact, the number may be zero. I've talked to other hotel operators in this town, and they tell me they're operating below that 60% occupancy. If they're operating below 60% occupancy, how can you be asking the taxpayers to invest 11 million dollars in a hotel project that will likely cause problems for our other properties in this town? What I also find frustrating about this process is that you have the staff that can do this. Your own staff have access to more and better data than any consultant has on this. They could be monitoring the sales tax receipts and the hotel tax receipts of these properties over time. Even the consultants can't get access to that good data. You need to create a climate inside City Hall where your planning staff, your economic development staff are ready to go out and do that work for you. Unfortunately, what I can tell you is, in this City Hall, you don't have that climate. You have failed to create that situation. You have staff people who are afraid to stick their neck out and give you the good, straight, and honest answers. They're afraid to go out and tell you because it might tick off politically influential developers, the Chamber of Commerce, the people that run this town. That's not a good way to operate. It's not a good way to underwrite an 11 million dollar loan. We're making decisions based on hunches rather than on good, solid market analysis. Let's think through our record on hunches here lately. Riverfront Mall, we had a hunch that fashion outlet malls would work for us. What happened? It failed. We invested, we financed a 16 million dollar building, we got that money back, but we put 3.5 million bucks up on a parking garage that now earns us nothing. We've got an underperforming project, it, in fact, now, we have no control over. It's now another hotel. When we wanted it to go into further retail, what did we discover? Gee, our hunch was wrong. There wasn't enough retail demand to fill that property up. Downtown 2000, the property we're looking at, we had a hunch that mixed-use would suddenly be a good deal if we would just prime the pump with a, with a 8 million dollar parking garage. Our hunch was wrong. We got one little building out of it, a penalty out of the developer. Basically, we've been stuck for over a decade with an empty parcel, a non-performing parking garage that the taxpayers have had to pick up the deal. 4950 Research Parkway, we had a hunch that, gee, we could use another incubator in this town. We paid 3 million bucks for a building worth probably a million seven. We had a hunch that it would have occupancy at 89%. I drive by there frequently. I see... I see typically three cars in a parking lot. 80, I don't know what the occupancy is, but 89% occupancy ought to produce more than three cars in a parking lot. We're not having a very good record on our hunches around here. The lesson I would take from that is that, wait a second, we need more and better market When I've asked people about this, what I'm hearing is, oh, but we did the Springstead report. Two things. First, the Springstead report speaks to the feasibility, it does not speak to the market analysis. It does not answer the question, do we have the demand to do this? I used to be a loan underwriter. If I have a deal that comes to me, and my consultant, what we expect to have it say is, the deal doesn't work without the TIF, it does work with the TIF. Your consultant has told you, yes, it doesn't work without the TIF, but it also doesn't work with the TIF. As a loan underwriter, if I see that happen, I throw up a red flag and say, this is a poorly underwritten deal. What you need is information that helps you separate a good TIF deal from a bad TIF deal. I'm asking you, don't fall into the trap that other cities have followed and start saying yes to every TIF deal that comes down the pipe. You need to get good, solid information to separate a good deal from a bad deal.
Tell me again, you say your staff is saying that it doesn't work without the TIF, and it all, staff's also saying it does not work with the TIF? I missed the part leading up to that. What?
The Springstead report does not answer the market analysis side, it simply speaks to the but for. But if you'll think about a standard feasibility and how, they run standard pro forma analysis. The theory is fairly straightforward. The project has to generate sufficient net operating income. Gross income minus operating expenses, net operating income. It goes to pay the debt on the property, and it goes to pay a return on investment to the equity investment. That's the weighted average of return to debt, return to investment. They're using the Pricewaterhouse numbers of, what did they say, 8 to 11? Call it 10. What they said is, without the TIF, it earns 2 to 3%. With the TIF, it earns 8%. 8 is below 10, the deal doesn't work. I'm a loan underwriter, and I've got people coming in to me and saying those kind of numbers? I stop right there. I would never take a loan to my loan review board if I had that kind of information in front of me. And that's what you have in front of you. Now, Springstead's got to be polite and answer it all. I can tell you the cold, hard facts of it. You've got a report that says this deal doesn't work. In the vernacular of the industry, something smells.
Thank you.
Next.
Jim Mullins, in Lawrence, I live here in Lawrence. I am a field director with Americans for Prosperity, Kansas. I've got some information that I'd like to hand out to you if I could.
Certainly.
Before you start the clock on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Jim.
What I gave you was an appendix for the city of Wichita, and I want you to know that I, I have the 2011 report-
Are these all pay-as-you-go and not, are these all-
I'm sorry?
Are these all pay-as-you-go TIF districts?
They are different, they are mixed, mixed use of districts.
Is it identified anywhere in here, what type of the district they are?
It doesn't say on there, but, but if you had this report, it would. That's an appendix to it. This is the 2011 report of tax abatements and economic development incentives for Lawrence, and I've seen that, very well done, I have questions with that. This is one, 2011, for the city of Wichita, TIF history and performance report, 2011. The only difference is, is that they gave us an appendix A for Wichita that we don't have for Lawrence. And if you look at it, it has all the different districts, and the way you have to read this, guys, I know it's a little strange, but you read the front page, and then the back page is the other, over here is the other years beyond that. But what it does is, it shows you some things that I think we all need to have as, as transparency and accountability, is it shows you the projected TIF revenue, the actual TIF, the bond payments, the surplus of deficit, or the cumulative surplus or deficit of each one of those TIF districts. We need to know, because like the, the parking garage down here, I don't know how far underwater that thing is, but it's underwater and we know it. I guess the question is, is we need to know, before you do any more TIFs, I think you need to direct staff to do this kind of thing with this, with these TIF reports. The other thing that I think we need to do, and they're, they're doing some of this in Wichita, they're not doing it enough, we're going to try to get state law change so that it's even more difficult to give TIFs out without performance reviews. We need to make sure that the TIFs are performing. In other words, you have got to go in, and like, like he just said, it's not just the financial feasibility, but it's also the market analysis needs to be done in order to determine whether these things really have a useful life, are they going to pay for themselves? Because the taxpayer's the one that's always on the hook. There's a couple of studies that I could recommend you to read. One is by Paul Byrne, he's a professor of economics at Worsburn University. He has done a lot of study on TIFs. And what you'll find is industrial TIFs, typically, if you're going to build warehousing, you're going to build manufacturing facilities, most of those do pay for themselves. They come out in the end, whether it's a very positive, positive for the, for the city or the municipality. But retail TIFs like this one downtown don't. That's, that's really the gist of it all. The Cato Institute is the other one that studied this, on the TIFs. The other thing is, is that, you know, when you give industrial, not industrial revenue bonds, but like out here, it's East Hills Business Park, I've looked at the tax abatements that have gone on out there, with a lot of those, and they've got them, most of them are about 50 or maybe 60% tax abatements, but the way I read this thing, maybe I'm wrong, correct me if I am, but on the south project is an example, that 100% of the property tax of the TIF is a reimbursement plus interest, 50% of the sales tax reimbursement, and 100% of the TDD revenue. Those are all going to be rebated back to the developer. Am I correct, am I wrong in that? I'm asking, because I don't know for sure.
Well, the increment, 100% of the increment.
That's what I mean, the increment, I understand. So, what I'm getting at is, is if you're going to do this project, I'd recommend you don't, but if you're going to do it, make sure there's some performances in there that's going to make sure that the developer does what is going to happen so it doesn't hurt the taxpayer. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Question? Question, please?
Dave, Dave, or somebody on staff, the difference between the TIF that we're looking at this evening and the TIF that was done in 2000 to cover the parking garage, the pay-as-you-go, the pay-as-you-go system on this, on this facility at Ninth and New Hampshire, the taxpayers would never have to pay a penny of this?
That's correct. Let me, let me contrast the two projects if I can, Commissioner. The downtown 2000 project had a number of different goals. It had the goal of redevelopment of the 900 block of New Hampshire that was proposed by the developers. It had the significant goal of relocating the Lawrence Arts Center from its location at the time at Ninth and Vermont to a new location. We had struggled with that as a community as to where to relocate that, and that was part of, of the project. And then, the other goal was, is to provide a parking garage in the center part of downtown that would serve not only the redevelopment of 900 New Hampshire, but would also serve all of downtown. We issued general obligation bond debt that is paid for by property taxes in this community to build the parking garage. We all, we had forecast that the redevelopment would, would occur a lot quicker than it, than it has materialized. Those forecasts were not accurate. The accuracy that I think is sometimes overlooked in regards to the parking garage is that I think the parking garage has been successful for downtown, and I think the Arts Center has been successful for downtown. It was, really was, the three different projects there. In that, in that instance, we did not do a pay-as-you-go, we did a traditional TIF where the city took on the debt. That contrasts with this project. The city is not putting any money into this project, as far as any current tax dollars at all. We're not issuing any debt. If we issue industrial revenue bonds, if that's your decision, that debt is solely owned by the creditors for the, the project, for the project. We're not, there's no city debt obligation at all in regards to this project. They're going to have to raise the money, borrow the money in order to do the entire project, including the, the TIF reimbursable items, the, the parking garage that they're going to build. Only if the project is successful will they then get any revenue. They'll get revenue from the, the tax increments that we're talking about, the property tax and the sales tax. They are, they are also requesting that they place an additional 1% sales tax, the Transportation Development District, TDD, 1% sales tax on the sales that occur just on that site. It's not a citywide sales tax, it's just specific to that site, and you all have worked on policies in regards to that. We will get the first $850,000 of that TDD revenue. That revenue will come to the city, it will go to our bond and interest fund, because that's where we pay for the existing parking garage. So, is that, is there, is there tax dollars, future tax dollars involved in this project? Absolutely, there is. It's public money, that's why we're going through this process, that's why Mr. Anderson talked about the TIF process as being procedurally intensive, because there are tax dollars, but they're future tax dollars. And part of your analysis under your policies is asking the question of, will this project proceed if they don't get the incentives? And you've been able to see that, that report. Right now, the project pays, I believe, $8,000 in property taxes, the existing site. Is that correct?
$7,000.
$7,000, okay, well, we're raising the mill of you a little, let's call it 8,000. $8,000 in property taxes. And it will continue, will, will continue to, to get that. If the project doesn't proceed, I'm not sure what will happen to that property, it'll probably still pay $8,000 in property taxes in the future. In this case, if, if the project does proceed, it will pay a lot more in property taxes, a lot more in sales taxes, and that will reimburse the, the developer for all of their expenses. So that's, that's the contrast between how we did the parking garage in the 900 block of New Hampshire, and then now with this underground parking garage and so on. This is very similar to how we structured the Oriet Hotel Project. There's no public money that was put into the Oriet Hotel Project, it is future tax dollars that are paying for those improvements associated with that facility. And it's, it's just a contrast. Certainly appropriate for public discussion and debate about whether that's the right place to put public incentives, but it is a different method, it's something that staff feels is, is appropriate on these types of projects. There's no city dollars going into the project initially. There are city dollars that are generated by the project that reimburse the project for certain eligible expenses, and in some cases, pay the city for certain things as we negotiate in, in regards to the agreement.
So it's potential future tax dollars?
Absolutely.
So, you said, future tax dollars, it's potential, because without the construction of the building, none of these tax dollars would be generated except for the increment that exists of 7 to 8,000 dollars currently?
And, that is correct, and the more successful they are, the more quickly they get reimbursed. If they're not successful, then they don't, then the property won't be as valued, or they won't get the, obviously, the sales tax return.
And is there any actual loan occurring? Professor McClure likened us to making an $11 million loan on this property. Is there any tax dollars coming out of our coffers that exist today that will be leaving our coffers for the future?
I don't, I don't think that's an appropriate analogy. You are talking about getting a stream of revenue from this project that if you want to buy the Salvation Army property, you all haven't made that decision. You would get money from this site in order to help you reimburse that acquisition. That, I mean, to some extent, that's a speculative decision, you all haven't authorized that, you've authorized us to talk to them about that potential acquisition. I think it's a great project, you all have indicated that it's appropriate, we're including that in all of these documents. That would be a, a future city obligation where we would use that money to acquire that, that property as part of the Arts Center expansion.
And do they, does the Salvation Army building currently pay any taxes?
The Salvation Army building is off the property tax rolls, it receives a property tax exemption through a different, a different statute. And if the city acquired it and used it for the Arts Center, it would still be off the property tax rolls.
Okay.
Other questions? Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Joshua Montgomery. I'm here speaking for myself tonight. I brought the city a check. This is our second quarter franchise fees from the community wireless. That's a, a new revenue stream for the city. It's a franchise fee that the other telecommunications companies in the city don't pay. It's a franchise fee that, as far as I know, no telecommunications company in the state pays on their monthly revenues. And that's an economic development project that we've worked on with the city commission and with city staff, who've shown a lot of patience working with me over the past several years. And so, one of the exciting things I, I get to do in my job is I get to sit down and have a one-on-one with the various different city commissioners as we have new projects come up. And over the past couple of weeks, I've gotten an opportunity to sit down with, with most of you, I haven't quite caught up with you yet.
I'm fast.
Mayor Shum.
Can't catch you.
But, and this, this particular issue came up in a couple of those conversations, and I have to say that I was very much in Professor McClure's court coming into it, and that after having some conversations with various commissioners, I'm very much turned around on the issue. The one thing I did want to bring up in terms of economic development is, is in the public, and I think also maybe in the, on the public service side of the fence, there's a lot of frustration that the economic development projects that get built within the community are largely funded through some form of a tax abatement. And what that means is that the only projects that really are feasible are projects that have a very large sales tax or a very large property tax component to them, because that's the only way that they can get funded. And so, there's very little discretionary money on the side of the city commission that the city commission or that staff can recommend that gets spent on projects that might be new and innovative and create a new revenue stream for the, for the city. And so, as part of those discussions, one of the things that came up with Commissioner Dever was possibly the idea that some of the TIF money, maybe not in this project, but maybe this is something that staff could look at on a policy side for future projects, that some percentage of that TIF money could get set aside and colored, I don't know, orange, but the colored, whatever color of money that the commission decides to put towards economic development. And that, that stream of monies, maybe 5% of the TIF or 10% of the TIF that's being paid over the course of the real estate project, and, and really a developer who's getting, you know, 100% TIF on the various different improvements, is it, is it really unreasonable to ask that developer to give up 5% of that money or 10% of that money for other economic development projects? It can be tasked to projects that don't generate sales tax, that might not generate property tax, but that might enable some entrepreneur coming out of KU to start the next Facebook, or that might enable some entrepreneur who might come from a family that doesn't have any money, that doesn't have any family ability to, traditional financing is friends, family, fools. And so, if, if you don't have access to any one of those three revenue sources, you know, where do you go when your idea is the next Microsoft or the next Linux kernel or whatever the situation might be? And so, an egalitarian way of making that money available to people who might not come from a family that can afford to do a $45 million real estate project would be to have some money colored on the discretionary side that the city commission could then decide to award to economic development projects that aren't real estate and that aren't sales tax. And so, I guess what I'm kind of bringing up here today is maybe the concept, maybe not for this one, but maybe for the project on the north side of the street when it comes up, that maybe 5% or 10% of that TIF money can be set aside as economic development funds, that can be used at the discretion of the commission to fund the next entrepreneur that comes up the pipe. It's, it's probably not something that would work for our project, but it might work for somebody at KU who is off to Silicon Valley to start their, let's say, keyhole satellite mapping company, which came out of Lawrence. Off to Silicon Valley to start that, you know, maybe they start that here in Lawrence because there's a, there's some money available for them to do that. So, that's all I really had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm pleasantly surprised, I never thought I would see the day where I came to agree with Jim Mullins. It's kind of a delightful sensation, I have to say. TIF and TDD funding is not magic math, okay? And I guess I'd like to ask that, for a minute, if you will humor me, that you reframe. Every TIF and TDD project that you all approve, from my perspective, represents a diversion of public revenue. It represents a draw on taxes that could be used for needed community projects. From my perspective, this project and others like it represent lost revenue for the city. I don't think we can really afford to give away $12 million, and I don't think it's really an incentive, I think it's welfare. I think Lawrence, if we're going to use TIFs and TDDs and other incentive systems, we need to focus them on specific core purposes that really create living wage jobs and provide a benefit to the community as a whole. I don't think a hotel really does that. And I agree with Kirk that we're now creating something that is in direct competition with something that we've already funded. I mean, we're throwing good money after bad. I think it bears mention that the 2000 downtown Lawrence report was that initial consultant's assessment of a project that we have to agree basically failed in terms of covering the costs of what was constructed, was done by Springstead. So if we're going to go ahead and take their word for it this time, I guess I would ask you, what has changed that they suddenly have new or better knowledge that they apparently didn't have back then? As it's currently configured, I think this incentive represents a real loss of revenue at a time when the city has serious infrastructure problems. For the cost of the TIF and the TDD that's being discussed tonight, we could have rental registration, we could have an expanded code enforcement department, we could replace or repair our drinking water intake, which I would argue is actually kind of a priority. We could even realize community recycling. A girl can dream, right? $12 million is a lot of money. Our development community seems to have come to view TIFs as like the cash cow, and I think it generates a lot of resentment amongst community members. I don't think that the project as proposed and the TIF and the incentive that is being put forward is really going to create or improve quality of life in the community. There's a lot of dissension about the project, and I think it adds insult to injury to put public funding forward to support something that the neighborhood really doesn't want. I would also implore you not to assume that school districts who lose their tax-based funding because of this TIF are going to be able to make up that lost revenue through greater state aid. It's folly for us to be relying on the state for much of anything at this point. School budgets are going to be negatively affected by this and other TIFs, and they're going to look ultimately to the property taxpayer to cover the gap. I also have quarrel with the fact that the developers requesting industrial revenue bonds. I think in order for them to gain a sales tax exemption on top of the incentive is, again, a direct draw on potential revenues for the city. The sales taxes that could be generated to go into our coffers that come from their purchasing materials to build the building, we're now going to give away for free. Do you all even know, like, what is the value of that? What's the number? How much are we talking? Would they be spending on construction supplies? How much tax revenue is that? Do we know?
Speculative.
So in conclusion, I guess I'd just like to express that I'm frustrated, I'm tired of subsidizing the development community when the city has real needs, and I wish that we would invest in those first. The final thing I'll say is that the project is estimated to generate about $75,000 annually in hotel taxes. If you do a little back-of-the-envelope math, that means it would only take 160 years for the project to cover the $12 billion in revenue that will be lost. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Leslie, President of the Neighborhood. There are a few things actually occurred to me before I get on my high horse, I thought I might mention. I'm kind of concerned about charging parking underground, because kind of the point of it was to keep cars off the street, but if people are going to start having to pay to park underground for the hotel, then I'm afraid that that might push the traffic back out onto Rhode Island. That kind of concerned me a little bit. Also, an idea that I had was, instead of public subsidies for underground private parking, how about we use that public money instead to build a public parking garage behind Antique Mall? And that would be public parking, and straightforward, public dollars, for one thing. Also, I'd like to remind you that there's still an option to use public money from the city to buy 900 New Hampshire, the empty lot, and expand the art center, which we've already seen is actually cheaper than the Salvation Army lot. So, but that's still an option. So now I'm going to get on my high horse. Over the past year, we've been working on 900 New Hampshire, I've talked to literally hundreds of people about this project. I have been permanently associated with the address of 900 New Hampshire, so much so that when my out-of-town friends come to visit, they actually think I live at 900 New Hampshire, which is really embarrassing. Every organization that I have worked with as president has discussed this building with me. Even my pet sitting clients, when they see me on TV, call me up to talk about it. So tonight, I'm not just speaking as President of the Neighborhood, I'm speaking as head opponent. To be sure, the one thing people talk to me most about was the height and size of the building. Well, the number two thing people talk to me about was the public subsidies that they would be asking for, and how it smacks of corporate welfare through and through. New construction leads to new property taxes for the city, county, and school district to collect. But with public financing, when you have new construction, now you have a 20-year delay in collecting those increased taxes. Well, I'm sorry, but that sounds like shifting the tax base onto the average homeowner, and that equates to 20 years' worth of lost revenue for the public good. Looking back at the current TIF district plan for this corner, whose payoff did not reach the amount it is expected to, you come to realize that not only are we looking at lost revenue, these are actually speculative future dollars that we are treating as real dollars. It's called gambling. And we lost that gamble with the first TIF district, as well as the College Hill TIF district in Topeka. Then you bring into account that we already have millions in public financing sunk into the Oriad Inn, and now this project that we are creating, direct competition with that one, with even more public dollars, and frankly, people start using more emotional adjectives to describe 900 New Hampshire as crazy and foolish. We are looking at projects that look like carbon copies of the Oriad Inn and the Hobbs-Taylor Lofts. There is nothing unique to these projects. You are simply laying out the welcome mat for part-time, low-wage service jobs for a chain hotel. So let's look at what we will know will happen within the next 20 years, before we realize the speculative dollars. This is a project that will damage the historic district, lower property values for the immediate neighbors, which will eventually lead to further encroachment of downtown onto our neighborhood. That will happen, that's not speculative. You are also gentrifying downtown with mid-to-high-end housing, reinforcing the conversion of downtown as a viable commercial center to a Disneyland version of small-town America. You are literally selling out a historic, sustainable neighborhood full of affordable housing and starter homes. You are selling out a neighborhood that serves as a model of community building for our city. This is upsetting and disappointing to many people across your city, not just our neighborhood. I'd like to remind you that only one of the city commission goals relates to economic development. With votes like these, you're not working for the greater good, all you're doing is chasing tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Disneyland.
Good evening, I'm Gary Rexro, 2824 Gil Avenue. Just a brief, a couple of comments on support of the TIF district. I support the creation of this district because I believe that it's a great vehicle for Lawrence to use. My personal belief is, from listening to all sides of the debates and from really looking at the numbers, is that this is a way to help enable the creation of new tax dollars, not the spend of tax dollars. I believe that the creation of a district extends the advantage of this beyond just the project that's been in question recently, to many other things. I think you might hear about what's going on with the art center, what their plans are, but to other things that help drive infill and density in downtown that haven't even been brought to the table yet. I think it's a way to help encourage that in the areas that we've designed this to be for our community, and a way to help fund that through a pay-as-you-go process. I think those that have real concerns about this costing tax dollars, shifting tax bases, may not have all of the details, but from what I've seen, this is a great way to help fund this. Lastly, I think that the benefits from this district and from this project go way beyond just the property taxes on this particular individual lot that's in question. The way I think about this, the lot is paying taxes of around seven grand a year today, if I understood that correctly. The only way that particular area increases in value is for someone else to bring dollars into it. For us to be able to work in partnership with them, to not just tax them immediately on dollars, they're willing to put their money into this lot, so that we can gain the benefits of everything that comes from that, in the form of jobs, in the form of bed tax, in the form of other sales tax, in the form of out-of-town dollars that come and stay in Lawrence, far exceeds just the small amount of the property taxes in that one lot. For all those reasons, I just want to encourage you to support the creation of the TIF district and enable what we're trying to get done downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm KH, 916 Rhode Island. And tonight, I'm actually reading a letter that I received from Townsend Peterson, since he's not able to be here. So, "I hope that you'll give this letter your full consideration as regards to issues concerning the evening. In light of the reports that I received regarding consideration of my proposal for the use of 900 New Hampshire site, which was apparently dismissed in part because I was not present in person, I will give you a bit of an explanation. I'm a KU professor and have a very international research program. I have been closely involved with the 900 New Hampshire issue since it became public, and attended four different city commission meetings for the first part of the year. In large part in response to this issue, I postponed my sabbatical leave as long as I could until late April, in hopes of being present for all the key meetings of the HRC and the city commission. In the end, however, I was forced to depart for Brazil and had to watch the proceedings from here. I have asked Catherine Harris, KH, to read this letter for me. If any among you doubt that I am a real person and do exist, please feel free to call me at 785-371-4298. It's a local Lawrence call, but rings to my cellphone in my home in Brazil. I write to you in the strongest protest against the creation of a $12 million TIF public financing investment in the Compton-Taylor projects around 9th and New Hampshire streets, for four reasons. One, I am convinced, and I believe that anyone who looks closely at the numbers would be convinced, that these projects are feasible without public financing. That is, the "but for" clause does not hold here. In all of the research that I did for my ill-fated proposal for the 900, alternative proposal for the 900 New Hampshire site, the degree to which such properties are financially feasible became very clear. Indeed, my proposal, which was scoped at one-third the size of the project that you approved, was very profitable even without a request for public financing. And as a consequence, the building under your consideration would be considerably more profitable, because it's the same land purchase costs and two more floors. As a consequence, I submit to you that the "but for" clause does not hold in this case, and you should not approve this request for funding. Second, the very fact that the same developers, Compton-Taylor, are proposing the next big project north of the same area suggests quite clearly that they're not short on funds at all. If they believe that they don't have enough money to carry off 900 New Hampshire, then they should not be proposing the next, even bigger building that costs them even more money. My mother always says to me that I should pay for one thing before I start the next project, and maybe Mr. Compton and Trainer should do that, instead of looking to the city for tax kickback. They have enough money to carry off the project, but public funding from Lawrence will pad their profit margins still more, and that is why they're asking. Third, I am reading things in the general world, such as that the mayor and local business leaders that are saying that Lawrence needs this sort of development. Lawrence needs to grow, yes, but grow intelligently. I have been away from Lawrence for almost four months now on this sabbatical, but I will bet you that the Borders building is still not rented, that the ground floor of the Hobbs-Taylor Lofts to the south of the Borders is also vacant, and growing for the sake of growing is not smart. We've talked about this in the city for a long time. What is needed is genuinely smart infrastructure, and something that really does create, not, as we've been saying, this theory of potential, but let's find the things that are really needed and get them in there. I do not see much evidence that Lawrence needs this massive new space. Fourth, I am very concerned that Lawrence is far over in extending itself with these public funding investments. One thing would be a project that generated a new market, I think others have talked about that tonight, like a hotel that would host conventions, or something that is, which brings new people and new markets, and that's not what we're looking at here. But Lawrence is growing only slowly. If these hotel rooms fill, it will be at the expense of some other Lawrence hotel. If the office space fills, it will be at the expense of office space somewhere else. Lawrence needs new infrastructure only if there is a need for it. Otherwise, the overall tax base will stay constant and just rearrange. It is not true that if you build it, they will come. Rather, Lawrence needs to assess honestly and intelligently the need for this infrastructure before it's built. Otherwise, the effect on the tax base overall for the city will be nil, and in fact, delayed for 20 years, and someone else will lose out. In this case, maybe Compton-Taylor lose if the local tax base does not increase, but the real losers are East Lawrence, which has lost its dignity and will have its historical integrity assaulted. You are, of course, completely free to dismiss this letter.
You'll have to wrap up, please.
Well, you're completely free to dismiss this letter, just as my 900 New Hampshire proposal was dismissed, but please vote against this.
Thank you. No speakers?
My name is Susan Tate, I'm the Executive Director of the Lawrence Art Center, and I'm here tonight with members of our staff and Board of Directors. We are at 940 New Hampshire. The Lawrence Art Center is the result of a 37-year-old public and private partnership with the City of Lawrence, members across the private sector, individuals, including artists, neighbors, downtown business owners, who have supported our work across a broad spectrum of audiences that reach entirely across Douglas County and into every corner of Lawrence. Our current building at 940 New Hampshire is a result of a public and private partnership and is owned by the City of Lawrence. And one thing we'd like to do tonight is say thank you to the City of Lawrence and city commissioners, who have sought a creative way to allow us to expand our work outside toward the south. We're enthusiastic about the possibilities that could be presented as a part of this project. Our mission is to be an artist-centered organization that provides the best in arts education for preschool through high school and into the adult years, the best we can in contemporary exhibition spaces for artists from around the world, and especially from Lawrence, and the best we can in performing arts. Our partnership with the City of Lawrence and private interests allows us to continue to do these things. The possibilities presented by what we have been very loosely calling the Arts Commons to the south of the art center mean that we can expand extremely cramped spaces on an otherwise potentially landlocked block, we can allow children to play outside, we imagine art outside, performance outside, the possibility of a built structure, which would go through all of the necessary procedures in its design process and approvals, the possibility that we draw more people to downtown, we serve more children, increase our exhibition space and space for artists to work. We are committed to making our own investment and working with private partners to make this possible in the future, should the potential be there for that project. We are committed to a robust and vital neighborhood in downtown, in a tapestry of what the National Endowment for the Arts has called creative placemaking. Other private partners have provided space for us for artists east of the art center. We work closely with the neighborhood in many ways. We work closely with the neighborhood in many ways, and downtown Lawrence as well. I should say with members of our neighborhood in many ways. I want to close by reading a letter I received today from Rocco Landisman, who is the Chairman of the National Endowment for the Arts, who on March 15th of this year, visited the Spencer Museum, the Lawrence Art Center, and the percolator, our neighbor behind us. With me, Rocco Landisman walked around the block of New Hampshire. We stood in the alley. He looked at our preschool. He looked at our exhibition spaces. We told him about our vision, that someday, somehow, we might be able to include space for children, artists, performers to the south of the Art Center. Today, he sent me the following letter in response to our discussions here in Lawrence. I'll just read you a few sentences. "Susan, good to hear from you. You know from my visit to the Art Center and our subsequent conversations how enthusiastic I am about the work you're doing there. What you have in Lawrence is a role model for the creative placemaking vision we have adopted at the National Endowment for the Arts and is fast becoming a national movement. Yours is a model," and I should say, when he means yours, he refers to the City of Lawrence. There really isn't another model that has the same investment the City of Lawrence has made in arts, art-making, artists, and the teaching of art, and creating art patrons for the future. Yours is a model that needs to be replicated 100 times throughout the country, but first and foremost, needs to be supported in Lawrence. Your mission of presenting high-quality art, supporting artists who create it, and integrating both with Lawrence's neighborhoods is exemplary. I would add that it is exactly the public-private partnerships, like the one you're now proposing in Lawrence, that truly leverage limited resources. The alchemy of artistic activity does in fact work. All the research we have seen, and some of which we have published, attest to this. One plus one does equal four. We've seen it again and again. The arts not only bind and enhance communities, they're a powerful economic driver as well. At the Art Center, on behalf again of our Board of Directors and our staff, we appreciate the opportunity to work with a visionary city and private partners who make these unusual opportunities happen."
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
I'll write that down in a moment. I'm Hank Booth, and tonight, representing the Lawrence Chamber, but perhaps just as importantly, representing people who have lived in Lawrence, Kansas for many years. Because as I stood on the corner, on the northwest side of, of New Hampshire, and looking across the street, I'm, as we all have, staring at an empty lot, not very attractive, downright ugly when you think about it. And then, that's on the east side, and then on the west side, a striking new building that is creating business. It is creating homes. It is creating a new enterprise in our downtown. And then I think about that lot, and it, it hit me that half of my adult life, in the middle of our remarkable, busy, historic downtown, half of my adult life, that lot, has been empty and devoid of anything that creates anything at all. Unused, frankly, an eyesore. And now, I think, and I join those who feel that this is an opportunity, it will create some new jobs, it will create the opportunity for new homes in our downtown, it will create an opportunity, as they build both sides of this project, for another place to stay downtown, and I think our community will continue to draw more visitors. And it's an opportunity offered by the developer to build a, a new energy-efficient building for their neighbors, the Social Service League, located right there on the, on the alley. And I was just in there last week, dropping off some clothes, and I'm not quite sure how they keep doing business in there on some of these 100-degree days, but bless them for what they're doing. But they will have that new opportunity as a neighbor to the east, to serve a community in Lawrence that needs help with clothing and other assistance, and that will come from the developer of this project. And again, I, I look at the big picture, and again, I think just standing on that corner, with an opportunity to do this, and I think as we heard the numbers tonight that were presented, we heard numbers that don't show that the developer is going to reap some huge profit out of this, at the maximum limits of what the national averages show, but rather even slightly below what some of the minimum numbers are that are seen in this kind of a, of a project. But with an opportunity to create a new, a new centerpiece in our downtown in Lawrence, Kansas. And frankly, for somebody that's been looking at that empty corner for many, many years, that's an exciting prospect. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Matt Hoy. I'll just sign in real quick. I am a downtown business owner, and my office is next door to the 901 Building, and that's been a terrific, wonderful, exciting addition to our, as Hank described, vibrant downtown. A downtown that's the envy of communities across the country. I had the pleasant opportunity to host a couple of friends of mine in from out-of-town, who live in other Midwestern university communities, and of course, they were, like everyone, impressed with our downtown. But there was some discussion. We were, we went to the Lawrence Art Center auction that evening, and we were talking about development projects that were under consideration in downtown. And these friends of mine were amazed at the, the consternation that, that can arise in our community when we consider someone of our own here in our community, considering making tens of millions of dollars' worth of an investment in our community. So I stand here this evening, encouraging you to support the TIF for the 900 New Hampshire project. I really don't need to reiterate the very strong arguments that exist for your support. I'd simply ask that you give the support to the TIF and vote in favor of it, and I thank you for listening for my comments.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Brian Iverson. And, you know, I think a lot of good things have been said about this project tonight. You know, I think Lawrence is lucky that we have people like, like this, that are willing to invest tens of millions of dollars in our downtown. I think, I think this is an example of the process working. We've seen this project morph into something that I think is, you know, palatable to all involved. You know, a reminder, or something that strikes me, is that there's no public money going into this project, that this is a pay-as-you-go, and out of that, the city's going to get $850,000 for the parking garage, the Art Center's going to get help, and the Social Services League is going to get a new building. So I urge you to support this TIF.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Katie Walsh, just representing myself right now. I think everything's been said, so I won't be repetitive. We did have our first meeting of East Lawrence Neighborhood with Mr. Compton, Mr. Trainer, last night at the library, to look at the initial plans for the seven-story apartment building. And one thing that I didn't know was that the little parking lot that goes off to the east, I, I don't have a picture. Okay, so here's 9th and New Hampshire, here's going to be the seven-story apartment building, here's the Keller Building, the two-story, kind of sandstone-colored. The Black Hills Parking Area right here, we were told is also part of the TIF district, and that they are planning to build some townhomes in the future. And so that was news to me, and I'm wondering, are we also considering that aspect of the TIF this evening? Because it's new information. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
The two scariest phrases in municipal government are "in the discretion of the commission" and "future tax dollars." I support the comments of Professor Kirk McClure. I would add the following. According to the Lawrence Convention and Visitors Bureau, there are just over 1,300 hotel motel rooms in this community. That number, to the best of my knowledge, has never been brought forward, and it is not part of the fact record that we approved here this evening, to the best of my knowledge. And the Springsteen Group, in their consulting work, did not put forward that number. The question is, is that number too many or too few for this community? Do we know at this point? The second item is, it's my understanding, perhaps erroneously, that the Marriott Hotel Corporation is going to be involved in this project, in one way or another. They're going to either be operating, or leasing the hotel, or something, but does the TIF amount to a subsidy to a corporation like the Marriott Hotel Corporation? Has their annual report, most recent, 2011, been examined by city staff or anyone to see whether or not they could afford to fund the parking garage in its entirety, without city assistance? Has that been done? I'm not sure. The matter of jobs created, I haven't heard any information specifically from the Springsteen Consulting Group or anybody else about how many jobs will be created by this hotel and other businesses? What classifications of jobs will be created? And what will be the average salary or wage of each of those positions? I don't know. There, the, these are questions which I think are legitimate. And I think the other final point is that of transparency. We don't have transparency here. We don't have a record of what the agreement between Marriott and, I guess it's First Management, who owns the, who will own the property, what that agreement will be like. We don't have a disclosure on the part of First Management of their financial situation, maybe we do, I, I just don't know, as to what makes it necessary for this city subsidy to be put forward. If that's been done, I, I'm not familiar, and I apologize if it has been done. And so, in conclusion, I would say that this doesn't look to be a, a good deal, and sentiment about vacant lots, and it looks so poor, and we have a, a nice building on the other side of the street. Well, a nice building on the other side of the street is an apartment complex, and it's not hotel primarily. So I think we need to very, take a very close look at this. I imagine it's too late. I think the decision has already been made, and at some point, we, the taxpayers, will probably pay for it.
My name is Alex Delaney, 2724 Ann Court. I, it's almost 10 o'clock, so I'll try to be brief. But I found this quote on my iPad just now, that I thought was kind of perfect. It's by Henry Ford, if I can find it again. "Failure is only the opportunity to begin again more intelligently." There's been a lot of talk about all the failures of the other TIF projects. I mean, first of all, I kind of echo what Hank said. Lawrence is a great place to live. So, we haven't really failed. Everybody talks about how great Lawrence is, everybody wants to come to Lawrence. As far as the parking garage is concerned, we need parking. I mean, I work downtown. I have to drive downtown. I know what it's like to try and find parking Monday afternoon at 12:15. Sometimes even that parking garage is full, so it's worth the $8 million. But really, we're not failing. And even if this project fails, it's not the City of Lawrence that's failing, because we're not on the hook for it. The developers. So, the facts are, is the developer is putting in the money, we're just reaping the long-term benefits, especially when we have an empty lot sitting that's an eyesore, that's not generating very much tax revenue.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Brian Sultano. I'm going to be a little repetitive, because I think it needs to be hammered home, but we should not be giving tax breaks and reimbursements to millionaire developers for their own agenda, which I think the, the points that have been made in favor of this development are kind of odd, and this is, this is why I'm saying it needs to be hammered home, and make sure people aren't going back and forth on the same points. It's been talked time and time again by the business supporters of this development, that it is the developer's own money, except we're here for a reason. I mean, it's odd that in the same breath, they're pleading for reimbursements in area, in certain areas of 100%. It's odd that the case being made here is money that's going to help the community when really, it, it, it comes back to, what, what's on the table here is this, this, this development. And the use of public funds, it, it keeps being said time and time again, that no public funds will be used. Yet, these, these few things kind of slip in, and it's not like, the, it, it doesn't go above the radar a lot of the time, but something like future tax dollars, and where people catch it. Future tax dollars means a diversion of tax funds that could go elsewhere. Future tax dollars means that you've got, that, that, that is tax cuts right there. You, you, you've got future tax dollars going back into the developer's hands, it goes back into the cost that they say they're putting their, their money on the line. They say they're, they're, they're doing this. But once again, here we are, talking about that issue, trying to get money to develop these projects. If it was their own money, it'd be their own money. That, that's not the case when they're getting reimbursed fully in some areas. I think this project, all in all, is one more step in the wrong direction. I think it's a bad business plan on a, a number of levels. Professor McClure brought up something that I, just skimming through the Springsteen report, just skimming, skimming through the analysis, and not having a professional background in market analysis, can see that the numbers don't pan out the way developers- market analysis, can see that the numbers don't pan out the way developers say this will be a vibrant, booming section of the development. But that's not my only issue. It's not my only issue that they say they're going to have a reasonable rate of return when they've got percentage numbers that are half the average rate. That's not my only issue with something like this, because you set up a district like this, you set up one more place where this, you set up the culture of tax breaks for the large businesses coming in, for the large developers. That's what you're going to get. I mean, that's, we see it happening right in front of us right now. And I mean, I know it's, it should be obvious to everyone. You go downtown, there is that split between what's there right now, what's getting vacated, and what's coming up in its place. You've got new construction, not just the constructions with Ninth and New Hampshire. You've got trainer apartments headquarters being built downtown. There's a reason for that. And every step that's put in the, made in the way of this kind of progress, sets it up for a new idea of Lawrence. Downtown Lawrence specifically in this issue, but you have a different outlook for Lawrence with these kind of developments. It's not the same one that brings people into Lawrence. You've got it going to carbon copy cities, and we're not going to win bringing in these kind of businesses, bringing in this kind of development. We can't compete on the carbon copy level. Casey's already got us beat with that. They always will.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone. Oops.
I'll sign in here. My name's Adam Ritchie. I live at 2119 Rhode Island. I own a business downtown, and it's very close to this development. We're a catty corner from them. I really support this development and this TIF. You know, a lot of people have made some great points, so I'm not going to belabor either side. There are positives and negatives in both ways. But if we're looking at what the future funds are going to do, you know, and how it's a negative for the community to spend these future tax dollars on a development that's going to bring people to this community, that's going to allow those people a chance to enjoy our community, and spend their money at other restaurants, shops, and other places in our town, we also ought to look at, let's say, what the benefit or a cost benefit is on building a road. There's plenty of construction going on now, and there's really not a whole lot of return on that investment that we can see from a dollar standpoint. Anyway, I support the TIF. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? They entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
My name is Frank Jansen. I want to remind Mr. Booth, way back some years ago, there were houses on that block. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
Later on, there was a gas station facing north. Later on, there was a tobacco store in that building. I'm against the TIF, against the building. Our dream, some people in East Lawrence have a dream for that lot, to be a public park, benches, trees, shrubbery, flowers, children's pathways, events on that park, maybe even bring back the free movies on the side of the building. So I'm opposed to the TIF. Thanks.
Thank you. Try one more time. Anybody else entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Deborah Carter, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Public meeting is closed. Staff have any comments, overall comments, with regards to issues brought up?
Mayor Commissioner's staff will be happy to respond to any questions. I can't respond to one of Ms. Walsh's questions, and I don't know if you want to go into that. If you look at the draft ordinance, creating the redevelopment district, and you scan down to the bottom of that ordinance, it has a map. It's called Exhibit A, Map of Redevelopment District and Project Area. And it does include, on the north project area, it does include New Hampshire Street, it includes what I still call the Black Hills Energy Building. It also includes the parking lot that you were talking about, Ms. Walsh, there that goes over to Rhode Island Street. So your creation of the redevelopment district includes that parcel. It's our understanding that that's owned by the development group that is the applicant for the project. And Bill or others can speak to that if you've got additional questions, but there was that question up there. I didn't want to respond. Would you be happy to respond to other questions, or provide any other comments as well, if you like? And Diane, and Britt, and others can do that as well.
Any questions for staff? Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. Dave, question, and this goes from the Springsteen Report, and it talks about the revenues, the TIF revenues, and I believe that this gets at the question of future tax dollars that are going to go and pay for, you know, the allowed improvements in this area, and make sure that I have this right. Talks about the TIF revenues at $155,784 from add valour on property tax, $142,270 from sales tax rebates, $55,792 from the Transportation Development District for a total of $353,846 a year, or a total amount of $3,352,759 over a 16-year period at a 5.5 percent interest rate. Now, that is just the principal amount that is to be collected from future tax dollars. Is that correct? Okay.
I'm not sure I understood the very last part of your question.
Well, it said that the total TIF and TDD monies that would be collected from this project are $3,352,759 over a 16-year period at 5.5 percent interest, and I read that from the report.
Yes, and Commissioner, are you looking at the four-story report or the total report? I think they do have it broken down in terms of what the north project will generate and the south project. I just wanted to make sure I was following with you.
Let me look, hold on.
And Britt, you may have already identified the...
Where did it go?
Now, I kind of did a chart to break these down. The south project TIF property tax revenues was estimated at 3.4 million, 2.8 million with TIF sales tax. This is all for the south project. 1.2 million for TDD. The north project TIF property tax at 4.4 million. TIF sales tax at, basically, there was nothing, which was explained earlier. And TDD revenues also at zero, because no taxable sales generated. So the total for both projects in TIF property tax revenues, projected over the 20-year term, was 7.8 million. The total TIF sales tax, projected over the 20-year term, is 2.8 million. And the total TDD revenues was 1.2 million. So if you add all that up together, you get a total of 10.6 million in TIF, 1.2 million in TDD, total revenues of 11.8 million. These are all just rounded ballpark numbers. Does that help?
Mm-hmm. And so then, the future tax dollars that we're talking about is only if this project's built. Is that correct? In that, if this project's not built, we can, all this is gone.
That's correct. These projections were made on the assumption of this proposed project as it is presented, both the south and the north components of it.
Other questions for staff? More, or not?
Can I have a question of the applicant?
Sure. Applicant, please come up to the podium.
You know, anytime, Bill, and I'm sorry to bring this to you at a late time, but one of the things that really concerns me about projects, and specifically projects that have a public incentive component to it, is that I have a real feeling that one of the things that we need to do is support local subcontractors. And given the ability to be able to participate in the building of any of these projects, especially when we look at exempting things like sales taxes and all the things that go along with this, what kind of assurance can you give me as Commissioner that local subs will be given the opportunity to bid, and how are they going to go about doing this to make sure that they have that opportunity to do so? I mean, if it's about job creation, and it's about all the things that's good about, you know, Lawrence, Kansas, how can I make sure that I can tell people, you are going to have the opportunity to bid on a project like this?
I'm not the construction manager on this. It'd be, you know, First Management's going to be the construction manager, so I'd be happy to have them have a discussion with you after this meeting, but what I can tell you is the 901 project...
No, excuse me, I need it now.
Well, I mean, I think what you need is, the 901 project is your best example. I think almost all the subs on that were local. Chaney did the plumbing. First Management built the building. You know, they used a number of subcontractors that were local. Most of the local guys were given the opportunity to bid on the project. I'm not aware of a single sub. The only one that I remember was, we had a driveway contractor that, if you remember the sign out in front, that everybody was excited about. That was a non-union sub that had some issues with the union, so I'm not sure exactly what the whole history of that was, but they may have been from Kansas City or someplace, but I'm not aware of any other sub on that project that wasn't a local sub.
Okay.
So if that answers your question, I would anticipate that it'd be the same process, that we'd be looking at local subs, and local workers, and local contractors to do this project, so.
Materials would be bought locally?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
As long as I'm able to tell people that they're going to have the opportunity to bid on these, you know, this particular job in the ways...
I think you can tell them that. You want me to give you a phone number, call?
Sure.
Thank you. Call Seth Martin at First Management, 841-7333.
Other questions? Thank you. All right, so the first order of business probably is to remove, we're going to do this to remove the existing TIF from this project area on the south part. That would be ordinance number 8728, and that would be item C, which will drive the whole discussion on whether we're going to issue a new TIF or not, so would like to take a first swing at it.
Swing at that one. Clearly, ordinance number 8728 consists of removing the property in question from the existing district. Obviously, it's underperformed. People pointed out the failure of our downtown 2000 project, and the failure of that property to actually generate any additional tax dollars. This ordinance would allow us to remove it from the existing district and place it in another district, hopefully one that would become more viable in the long term. So what's left of this district right now is a less than 10-year period of time. I'm in favor of removing this property from that district, in light of the fact, if the next one is approved, we'll actually receive some revenue from that parcel to help us pay for the parking garage, which was originally intended to pay for.
Right, and that follows an agreement with the developer, based on conversations we had here in this room, the City Commission, that we felt they were still obligated, in principle, to pay for a portion of the original parking garage. And the staff determined that $850,000 was a number that would be an equitable number to pay for that portion of the garage that was originally assigned to that property. Fair statement to say. And so while we are removing the obligation of the first TIF, in the second TIF will be the obligation to pay back to the bond and interest fund over a period of time, $850,000. Correct?
That is correct. And the mechanism for that is going to be the new Transportation Development District sales tax. We get the first $850,000 in that sales tax revenue.
So we're trying to achieve the goal of the original district, in recovering funds to help us pay for this public improvement.
Correct. Mike?
Mayor, and I think to go along with that, you know, all of us do a pretty thorough job of investigation, you know, of any project that comes before us, but I know one of the things that's happened with me since I've been Commissioner this time, since 2005, you know, when this, when those payments have actually rested, you know, with, you know, the taxpayer on, you know, paying for a public facility and a parking garage in downtown, you know, I think that, you know, I and other commission members that I've served with have tried to figure out ways that we're able to reduce some of that obligation that was created. And let's face it, there were some economic, you know, changes that happened, you know, not only nationally, but in our community here, that, you know, had a, you know, a negative effect on the ability to be able to pay for that. This is a small way of being able to help pay some of, you know, the indebtedness that was created by the original district. Is this the best plan? I think this is probably the only plan that we have at this time. You know, Dave, I do agree with you on the comment about the success of the garage. There are a number of businesses, like the business that I own in downtown, that has come to rely on the, and the parking garage facility. I do believe that it's becoming successful, more successful every day. On the City Manager's Report tonight, we saw a report from you that talks about the usage of that garage, so, you know, is there ways of helping pay for it? This may be the best way that we have at this time, so, you know, I think it's something that we need to do now. Remove this, start the TDD, and being able to pay for it, at least part of that bond and interest money, so.
I, oops, sorry, Mike. I agree, and I just, oh, before we put this one to bed, wanted to say too, earlier speaker had mentioned that this TIF initially was formed on a hunch, and that the garage was built on a hunch. And I still, even though I know in the end, as we've talked about, situations change, and it didn't spur the development that we had hoped, it was an effort to stimulate development. And in the end, it's more than just a good amenity, it's actually really adding to the viability of some of the businesses downtown. So we took the risk in this case, and it didn't pan out. We were wrong, which I think also illustrates why we should not be taking those decisions out of the hands of the development community, because we can be wrong, they can be wrong, but if they want to risk their capital, I think we need to step, you know, stay out of the way and let them do it. So I think it's a, it's a good compromise to pull 850 out of the new TIF to put towards it, but I just wanted to get in that I still think that was a good effort back when, whatever commission is responsible for that.
Okay. I entertain a motion at this time to consider adopting on second and final reading, ordinance number 8728, removing the property on the east side of the 900 block of New Hampshire from the current downtown 2000 redevelopment TIF district.
Moved.
Moved, Carter?
Second.
Second, Deborah. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, carries 4-0. Next item we'll consider is D, which would be adopting Resolution Number 6893, a resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for the project. It's pretty straightforward. It's a sales tax exemption, and is a benefit. I don't have a problem with it. I don't know what else I can say.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think what's interesting is, City Manager pointed out to me, we used industrial revenue bonds to help build the Halladome, which has been contributing to our community for, congratulations, what, 30-some years? So... So I think that was a, that was a win.
I don't know. It's been a while ago.
Did you vote for it too?
I think that was even before me.
That's a long time.
Wow. Shows we need some more hotels if that one's still laying around.
We also need some early funds for an earlier phase of building.
Oh, yeah.
Good.
So it's a tool that I think is effective for the use in construction of hotels, or at least the city has utilized in the past.
We have.
Any other discussion? Entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 6893.
Moved.
Moved, Carter?
Second.
Second, Amix. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post carries four zero. And last on the agenda then would be item number B, consider adopting on first reading ordinance number 8768, creating the redevelopment district. I've listened to all the arguments, and certainly there's good statements on both sides. I don't believe I exactly agree with how Dr. McClure presented it. I don't believe it's a loan. It's not public money where we're renting, writing a check, hoping to get our money back. That's what we learned from the first TIF. That's how the first TIF kind of worked, and it didn't work well. We all acknowledge that. This particular situation is more entrepreneurial. They've got to put up their money. If they're successful with their creation, then they'll get refunded a part of the money that goes to provide parking spaces and site improvements for the goodness of that project as well as downtown. Because it is in the downtown district, there's no obligation, not one obligation, to have any parking whatsoever. So you could, if they had to have parking as a requirement of the site, I think you'd have a much different situation here. Because they don't have the obligation of providing any parking, they could build a hotel, and as Leslie Soden said tonight, the parkers would be up and down the streets in the neighborhoods. And you'd have an exasperation of parking and parking problems in the neighborhoods. So they are creating public parking that would otherwise be on the public streets, the public parking lots downtown. So I regard it as a pure benefit for the downtown district and the adjacent neighborhoods. I think that follows with our intent in terms of this TIF meaning, so. And it is money that they're going to generate based on their investment. The other, the other argument is that this is future tax dollars that we're giving away. Well, there's no development, there's no future tax dollars. So it's a very circular argument that can keep going around. But right now, I look at a vacant lot at 9th and New Hampshire that's not doing much for anybody.
Yeah, I'd say there were some comments about the jobs created and that sort of thing too, and I'd just say, looking from my frame of mind anyway, I was looking at downtown sustainability as being one of our major priorities here in town. Obviously, creating jobs is huge as well. The jobs created by this project aren't my focus in this case. It is sustainability downtown. Probably not as enthusiastic about hotel rooms as I am about the apartments portion of things, but in totality, I think that this corner is going to do a lot to add to the density downtown and to merchants across the board. So, you know, the comments as far as rooms coming, well, the hotel rooms will come from other hotels, that's true to an extent. They'll also add additional hotel rooms to the city, I'm convinced, based on Marriott's name and their reservation system, loyalty programs, et cetera. But no question, we need to keep working to add visitors here in Lawrence. I think that the rec center is something that I know we're working on getting some numbers that I think will be kind of eye-opening as far as just potential, that alone, as far as how many rooms we can add annually. So, but there's no question, I think someone earlier mentioned that we have a lot of average hotel rooms. That's probably being kind. We actually have a lot of very poor quality hotel rooms here in town as well. And there's no question, at some point here, some will fail, you know, and ultimately, you hope it's the better hotels. This is the sort of thing that will put pressure on hotels potentially here that have no flags, to put flags, because I think ultimately, they're going to have to have that to survive. You've got to have a reservation system tied to your hotel to get any kind of real volume in Lawrence, Kansas, being an hour from a major airport. So it's, I wouldn't back away from it just based on current hotel room numbers. I think there's a lot more to it than that. I agree with Laura Ruth, a lot of what she said and a lot of what others said, when you say, "I'd rather spend this $12 million on," a lot of things were thrown out there, rental registration, water treatment, new police facilities, one that comes to mind. But I think it really comes back, it's just the chicken and the egg, chicken or the egg, but instead, it's the TIF or the taxes here. I feel very confident, I think Mayor had said too, that if you want to spend that $12 million on other things, there is no $12 million without this project. There is no project without this TIF. The but for has been satisfied, and it's clear, without the parking, this project doesn't go forward. It's not feasible without the TIF to put the parking in, so it's not a question of whether or not the builder could come up with the money, or Marriott could come up with the money. It still has to make sense financially, so. The bottom line is, the sooner this project is paid off, in other words, the more successful this project is, the sooner this is paid off, the sooner that $12 million becomes a reality in taxes that are coming to us as a city. So I think we need to root for this project in that regard. And the other thing is, while we're waiting for that TIF to be paid, the density that's being brought to downtown Lawrence and the impact that that will have on downtown Lawrence realtors is something that we can't even quantify, but it's what I believe we know is the difference between downtown surviving and downtown thriving. And so for that reason, you know, I would say that I agree with, again, Ms. Ruth and a lot of people's concerns, and I'm representing you as well as everybody who was for it. It's just the bottom line is, I think that the way to do this is to get the $12 million that you want to spend on the other things is to approve this TIF. And if we went the route that is being suggested by the other side of denying it, you never see the $12 million. You never see this, this tax money to begin with, so. I'm in support.
Yeah, that's great analysis. You, being in the hotel business, I think I have to defer to your knowledge and expertise on the flagging and the reservation systems. But I travel and use hotels, and as a user, I can tell you that I never spend any nights in extended stay hotels, because it's a different product. It's not what I need. It's not what I need to get in and get out the next day. The product that we're talking about creating here is unique and does not exist in the city of Lawrence. So I may beg to differ, and I think there may be a little bit of, you know, cannibalism as far as rates go. And Professor McClure, I respect your opinion on whether or not this can fly or not, but I believe with the brand name, the recognition of a product like that, and the fact that I am a user hotels every week, and I never stay in this kind of hotel because I don't want to, because it's not what I need. And on the backside of that, this product is something we need in this community, because these are people who live 30, 60, 90, 120 days in our community, who might want to come back and move here, or live here, or move their businesses here. Again, this is a product that I kind of see as a way to draw people into Lawrence for a shorter, long-term effect on downtown. It's a different kind of product that exists in our community. I'm, you know, not real enthusiastic about giving tax dollars away at all. That's not what I want to do. In fact, I wish that this project would happen without it. We have done very little as a community to do great creative things over the last five years that I've been a Commissioner, because we haven't had the dollars. And it disappoints me to proactively give dollars that we might get into this community away before we even get them. But I heard the word gamble used earlier tonight, and I want to say that basically, our job is to determine whether or not this lot, which is sat vacant, we can debate about how many years, but I'm going to say 30 years, based on my research. The majority of this parcel of land has been vacant for more than 30 years. I've done the research. I can tell you what was there and where. And I can't believe that magically, over the next five to seven years, somebody's going to come around and build on this parcel of land and use it for the purpose that this developer will, and help pay for the parking garage that we're paying for out of our pockets. So we're gambling with your dollars right now by letting that parcel remain vacant. We're spending your tax dollars to pay for that parking garage with zero assistance from that land use or that development. So currently, I'm faced with, do we continue to spend your tax dollars, or do I try to plan on the eventual expenditure of those tax dollars with a bird in the hand, which is a person willing to spend millions of dollars in downtown Lawrence and create what I believe is a product that does not exist in our community, using dollars that wouldn't be here unless they were to construct that project? And for me, you know, the fact that the parcel's vacant and that people want to buy it, I wish someone would come buy it. I wish that the owner would sell it to somebody and that it would be a park, and it would be something wonderful downtown. The problem is, it's not. It's sat in limbo, and, you know, it's disappointing to me that we can't use it for some greater good for the community. And that's private enterprise. That parcel of land is owned by a private individual who can choose to leave it vacant as long as they want to, because they only have to pay $7,000 in taxes every year. For me, those are the things that make me want to do something and take control of our future downtown. And, you know, I really struggled with this one, and, but the one thing I don't struggle with is, we have a duty to the citizens to see that we are generating tax revenues. And when somebody comes along and offers to build something that I believe we need in our community in a fashion that is quite acceptable, in my opinion, and has negotiated in good faith with the neighbors and the other residents in downtown, I believe that that's somebody we want to try to help nurture and grow. And whether or not Marriott's going to get a benefit, that's not going to happen. You know, this is a franchisee, and they're going to be paying Marriott the money. This is not going to be directly benefiting any major corporation, other than a local developer and a local franchisee of the Marriott Corporation. So these are all dollars that are going to be circulating in our community. And finally, you know, we are foregoing the tax revenue, the real estate tax revenue, and that to me, again, is difficult to do, because I want that money to try and build something great, but, or to pay for the water treatment plant or the intakes, or to pay for things that we need to do. But what I see this doing is bringing in tax dollars that are going to be generating sales tax dollars, that are going to perhaps be generating people who want to move to this community, and people who are going to stay here instead of Kansas City in Overland Park, because there's an extended stay hotel in our community. Where would you rather stay? Overland Park, Olathe, or would you rather stay in downtown Lawrence, Kansas? That, to me, is an easy, no-brain answer, and I believe we're going to be bringing people here. You know, people can debate that fact, but we all love Lawrence. Let's sell it to people and make them move their businesses here, or move their homes here. And I see this as a tool to do so. So for me, you know, I've listened to all the arguments, and it's difficult, but I am sold on the fact that we are properly spending our potential future tax dollars properly by investing in this, as Professor McClure pointed out. You know, I don't see us making a loan. I see us as taking control over our tax dollars and moving them into the future so we can bank on getting them 20 years from now, not gambling with the future of what might be there. So for me, it's an easy deal.
Mr. Amix?
Sure. You know, first of all, I want to thank everybody for help and the amount of information that's been provided. I mean, this is, I think I've, it's one of those projects, I've probably got more information than just about any other project I've ever looked at. I want to say that, you know, I remember this lot, you know, probably as well as anybody. I remember the days of Snappy Gas, Carl Bonmeyer on the corner with his liquor store. I remember Mobile Locksmith being in there at one time. I remember Charlie's house right next door. You know, I remember before the days of US Bank's parking lot that was on the east side of the street, all kinds of little deals there. So I remember quite a bit about the east side of Rhode Island Street. But one of the things that, you know, I think is important to say is, you know, our downtown is extremely, extremely important to this community, as well as East Lawrence is. And when we look at the fact that we are trying to blend between the importance of two powerful parts of our community, that being downtown Lawrence and East Lawrence, it becomes very important to all of us to make sure that the blend of whatever that development that may or may not occur can work well in both, you know, the neighborhood, the adjoining neighborhood, and the downtown fabric itself. Is this the best project that I think could have ever been put together? You know, when I feel Casey, Katie's eyes looking through me, I get a little bit concerned, but as I have with, you know, a number of people in the comments I've had. But at the same time, you know, the job that I have is to make sure that we have met and, you know, all the requirements that we may have to make sure that, at the end of the day, that when I vote, I can feel comfortable that this is the best job that I've done. You know, everything that we do in this particular job is about future tax dollars. This is always about future tax dollars, about what we as Commissioners are going to provide sometime in the future for staff to be able to make recommended budgets and the use of future dollars that may be created sometime. And that's what this project's about. You know, the, I was involved, along with Mayor Shum, with East Hills Business Park. There's a lot of decisions that was early on in that project that are really just coming online now. You know, Dave, you were involved, a lot of the staff in putting together a lot of the agreements early on, the inter-local agreements there, is about future tax dollars. It was about job creation today and future tax dollars in the future. Well, now we're into that future, and we're starting to see some of the benefits from those kind of developments that we have. You know, the thing is, is that as I look at a lot of this project, you know, here again, one of the things that is extremely important to me is to make sure subcontractors, local subcontractors, are able to participate in this development, because I think, you know, the local, you know, the local builder, that local sub is going to take great pride in the way this project's, you know, going to come about. Bill, when I bring this up, and if I sounded short, I meant to be short with you, because I think it's important that we work to make sure that these locals are hired. I mean, these guys and folks, you know, get up every day, you know, either looking for work or trying to find that job, but we've got to make sure that if an incentive's going to be involved, that they're given every opportunity to bid on it, because we want to be able to retain those people and the jobs that they do right here in Lawrence, Kansas. So I think that's extremely important. At the end of the day, is this project important for the community? Absolutely. I mean, there's going to be benefits down the road that we're going to be able to see in future tax dollars to be able to pay for some of the projects that were brought up by other Commissioners tonight and the mayor. You know, it's not only a strong project for our community, but specifically, you know, our downtown and, you know, the central business district that we have, and the amount of work that we've done as a community, making an investment in our downtown. We have said that that is the heart of our community. We have made that statement over the last, since time began, that that is going to be the center place, you know, and regional shopping area that we have in our community. And I think that there's a number of people, the community, the taxpayer, has made that commitment. I think that the businesses that are there make that commitment every day as they open up and they run their daily business, and this is another way to help keep downtown strong. And consequently, it makes, you know, a strong, you know, a strong downtown makes for strong neighborhoods. And I think that we're going to continue to be able to do the things that's necessary to keep Lawrence, Kansas, that strong community that we all want. So, you know, again, it's a decision that each one of us have to make, and we have to stand up to it, but understand it's based on the information that we have, and all the information that we've received. It's still about the future, what the future's going to look like, and what we're going to be able to afford, and the monies that are going to be created from it. I believe that this is the best project that we have for that corner, and I think it helps pay the long-term bills that we have and needs that we're going to have for the future, help pay its part, you know, for those projects. So, anyway, thanks.
With that, I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 8768 on first reading.
Second.
Carter, Amix. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post carries four zero. Thank you, everybody, for being down here tonight. Thanks for the discussion. Thank you, everybody, for being down here tonight, thanks for the discussion. Next on the agenda would be public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment of a general nature? Seeing no one, hearing no one raise any issues, next item on the agenda then would be the future agenda items, staff.
What do you have on your calendars? We have no meetings next week.
I ripped the page out of my calendar.
We, we will have, as I think Mayor, you mentioned earlier, a, a busy August seventh meeting. And it will be probably off to a lot more, uh, cheer August, I'll be using this time here, next few days to get more organized, not one of the seventh meeting, but, uh, probably a pretty busy August.
Okay.
Dog days.
Any questions on the calendar?
The, the public hearing on the two thousand thirteen budget, any changes that we might have for the budget? Mayor, I guess I would ask you, would you want those changes to the commission Thursday before the August seventh meeting?
That'd be a nice courtesy to have that available, so we could look at it.
Need any help calculating additions or subtractions, we, we calculate it both ways.
Got it.
Subtractions? That'd be good.
No, if you wanna, if there's any commission we can help and, and put that together for you.
I'm not gonna sneak up on you, okay?
I, I look forward to it.
Got it.
We'll cut the coordinators.
Any other agenda item comments? Okay, any, any commission items?
No.
I already called for public comment.
Come right up.
All right, come up, please.
I'm sorry.
All right, real quick, I I've hung out most of the night. My name's Steve Birchfield, I'm gonna manage the Dillons en masse. We had a consent agenda item, and I didn't, it, it looked like it skipped through, and I didn't, I wasn't, wasn't sure if it got approved or not.
It did get approved.
Oh, we're sorry.
Thank you very much.
It got approved.
No problem.
We should've, we should've said something.
This is very interesting conversation, by the way.
I bet, yeah, three hours later. Four hours later.
If you're opening a new store, you don't have anything else to do anyway, besides sit down here, right?
That's right.
So, when are we opening?
August sometime. Soon.
August dish.
That's the date I heard.
August dish.
Okay, well, good luck to you, thanks.
Thanks.
Real soon.
All right. Okay.